Good afternoon. It's September 11, 2025, and we're about to start our Planning Board meeting. But before we start, I want to acknowledge the thousands of lives of people who lost their lives in the attacks on our country in September 11, 2001. Can we take a brief moment of silence to remember them? Thank you very much. Our first item this morning is item number two, Record Platts, subdivision plat number 20240090, Ray's Adventure, where staff is recommending approval. Do I have a motion for approval?
I move the motion to approve the record plats as the chair said.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The second item is item number three, Regulatory Extension Requests. We have one this afternoon, 500 Valley Brook Drive Regulatory Extension Request Number Three, Administrative Subdivision Number Six, 20240120, and Forest Conservation Plan Number F 20240780, where staff is recommending approval of the extension request. To have a motion for the approval of this extension request.
I move to approve for the approval of the extension request as chair just indicated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, four zero. And now we're starting item number four, the Round Table Discussion with our distinguished Parks Director, Midi Figueroa.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon. Our Brookside Gardens Butterfly Exhibit ends on September 21. We welcomed over 35,000 people to this year's butterfly experience. In August alone, there were 6,000 visitors. We do get questions about what happens to the butterflies and the pupae when the exhibit closes. Our staff conduct a butterfly roundup and basically collect all of the remaining butterflies and pupae and then send them to another butterfly exhibit that's at Hershey Gardens in Hershey, Pennsylvania. They hold the same permit from the USDA that we do. So the remaining butterflies will continue their journey there. On July 26, we celebrated the 35th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which, as you know, is landmark legislation that, among other things, was designed to ensure full access for people with disabilities to public accommodations and public spaces. Our Program Access Team, in partnership with the county and with the Commission on People with Disabilities, hosted a Disability Pride outside event at Black Hill. We had over 100 participants, and we had programs like adaptive kayaking and our adaptive mountain biking. We had accessible pontoon rides and fishing and other sensory-friendly activities. And according to one participant, and I'm going to read this quote, "My daughter Lily was able to go kayaking for the very first time in her life. Honestly, I never imagined it would be possible for her, but thanks to the encouragement and gentle guidance of her amazing volunteer, Lily felt confident and supported every step of the way." And statements like that, I think, are part of what motivate our incredible staff. They believe so much in the work they do. And speaking of Program Access, they also just began offering therapeutic bocce in partnership with the Special Olympics of Maryland at Wheaton Regional Park. And this is a six-week bocce league. It serves adult participants who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. And over the course of the program, they improve their fitness, they build social skills, and basically just have a good time. It's part of our Program Access Team's Meaningful Day series, where adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities enjoy daytime programming. It also includes events like campfire chats and trail trekkers. And by the way, we have three existing bocce courts. They're all at Glenfield Local Park, but we are doing some planning for a bocceplex to be located somewhere in our park system at some point, and we are going to have a bocce court at Bottle Works Park when that opens as well. At Maydale, one of our staff, our then Maydale Nature Center manager, had the idea that we should have an accessible campfire ring at the nature center. He wanted enjoying campfires to be something that was accessible to everyone. Our team at PDD just really took this vision and expanded it. They included accessibility to the picnic area, the play space, and the bench that overlooks the pond. And then facilities management built the space. So now Program Access is going to move forward with some programming here, and we're very excited about it. And it was just a great idea from staff, and we're really happy we were able to execute on it. Our youth education team at Brookside Gardens just started another school year as a Maryland Green Center, supporting local MCPS schools and becoming Green School certified by the Maryland Association of Environmental and Outdoor Education. Brookside has been a Maryland Green Center since 2014. You have to reapply every year. Currently, our staff are working with Oakview and Belle Prey Elementary Schools to submit their application for in March of 2026. We're also working with Wingate Elementary Schools, so we can help them prepare for the 2027 application season. And basically, what Brookside Gardens does in this capacity is provide outreach for the schools, onsite field trips. They help them with their application and provide professional development opportunities, all to support the schools becoming Maryland Green School certified. We also have this cool new piece of equipment. This is an electric pruning lift at Pope Farm. They recently purchased it. I will tell you, the cost of the lift was $60,000, just to give you an idea what a piece of equipment like this costs. Interestingly, we also had to pay a $3,600 tariff. But wait, we budgeted for 10% tariff, which would have been like $6,000. So we did okay. But the real interesting point here is if we were buying it now, the tariff would be something like 15% of the total cost of this piece of equipment. Previous to owning this equipment, we were renting gas and diesel-powered lifts. So the problem with that was we didn't always have access to them when we needed them. These are cheaper to use. They obviously have zero emissions. They're easier to maintain. They're quieter, which is important because the staff can communicate more effectively when they're on the lift, which is important for safety. So enjoy this beautiful piece of equipment.
How tall can it go?
Oh, Commissioner Pedewee, I don't know. I mean, I'm eyeballing it. I can't go much taller than that. I'm sure someone around here knows, but I do not.
I'm hoping that it can go to taller.
Oh, somebody is telling me. Oh, okay, a deputy director, very helpfully seated in the audience, says it goes to 18 feet. Thank you, Gary. That was a close one. We also had our Trail Ambassador graduation on October 20. We had two two-week sessions with 10 students each. I want to thank some of our great staff who pulled this together, Todd Bauer and Bob Turnbull, Annalee Galais, you know, basically our whole trail team. We did get some lovely media coverage on this, and I'm going to ask Dominique to play it on the next slide.
A fresh new look this morning for some of Montgomery County's more than 220 miles of park trails. That's thanks to a group of high schoolers who are part of a unique program that's been happening during the past couple of weeks.
I've learned a lot of cool mountain biking things from this program.
Incoming Rockville High School freshman A.J. Hill.
Yeah, man. Great job, A.J.
He and a small group of other high schoolers are getting hands-on coaching from Montgomery Parks leaders
Stand up.
to work on two different types of skills.
We're out here on day three of a two-week program for these kids in Montgomery County. They're starting the day with tools like this, and a few hours later, trading it for equipment like this, spending a couple hours a day on the trails here in Montgomery County, honing their mountain biking skills and getting better by the day.
So what we have going on is our Montgomery Parks Trail Ambassador Program.
Today, we're clearing out the stream after a tree took out the bridge.
So we mobilized, got the trail closed for a little bit, and then brought in our trail ambassadors to help us remove it.
The Trails Ambassador's Program is in its fifth year. Students earn volunteer hours necessary to graduate high school by helping to rehabilitate county trails in the morning, and then in the afternoon, they spend several hours tackling those same trails on two wheels.
It's a lot more fun when the trails are neat, clean, and without blockages or broken bridges.
It's very worth it because I love to bike on trails, and I don't want those trails to be all cluttered and not very ridable at all.
I'm generally kind of surprised at how many of them really enjoy the trail work part of it.
We want to get kids out in nature. We want to highlight our incredible trail system we have.
Look up, look ahead, hey, girl.
And it checks all those boxes.
Well, Montgomery Parks does two of these two-week-long sessions every summer with 10 students each session. And one of the best parts, working with area sponsors, Montgomery Parks is able to give every kid who participates in this program a free mountain bike and helmet at the end of the program.
Very cool.
Yeah, and this is just
Sorry about that. That video is just one example of some of the positive media attention we get because of the hard work of our Public Affairs and Community Partnerships team. Some of their successes from this past year, our parks website saw more than 1.8 million users. That was the equivalent of 5.1 million page views, and we had more than 26 million impressions in our Google search results. Our PR team issued 125 press releases and got more than 2,000 media placements, and we held 88 outreach and engagement events around park renovations, for example, like Elm Street, Laytonsville, and Bottle Works Lane Park. We had some really cool media coverage, including a segment about a program in bats, and you're seeing an image from that, still from that program. We had segments about a fish passage at Long Branch. I think we shared that with you in a prior director's report. And one of those was in Spanish, on Telemundo. We had a segment on Channel 7, another segment about the Trail Ambassador Program. So just a lot of really great coverage due to their hard work. And an activation update, our Parks Playhouse Junior Series had 26 performances through late spring and summer. There were almost 4,000 people who attended. It was about a 40% increase in attendance over the last season, and we had performances like musical acts, and we had science shows, puppets. Also, we had our All-Star Comedy Show on September 15 at Cabin John. We had over 600 people at that event. It featured six comedians. We worked with our Silver Spring-based operation called Improbable Comedy, and we also, of course, had breweries there like Saints Row and Third Hill. We had Catalyst Hot Dogs there. So I think the weather was good, and people had a nice time. We have an Acoustics and Ale coming, Acoustics and Ales, sorry, coming up tomorrow on September 12 at North Four Corners from 5:00 to 7:30. I believe the last one of the season is on October 25 at Black Hill, and our Ale Trail is on Saturday, September 20. Sadly, I will be out of town, so I won't be able to attend. That's at Rock Creek Regional Park at Lake Needwood from 11:00 to 3:00. And on September 17, we are once again hosting our Urban Tree Summit. We have professionals in the fields of, you know, there are arborists and naturalists who come and share their knowledge and research about the care of trees in urban settings. That's at the Silver Springs Civic Center, and we co-host that along with KC Trees. And our Twilight Concert Series, it's kind of similar to our summer concert series. It's at Brookside Gardens. It kicked off last night. It's every Wednesday evening in September from 6:00 to 7:30. And that is the end of my presentation. Let me know if you have any questions, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you for informing us all about all you do. I really, really appreciate the Program Access, you know, that is so cool and so needed. So thank you for that. And then the Trail Ambassador Program to get the youth involved and with the carrot program, you know, we all love our carrots. It was so great. And then I look forward tomorrow to, weather permitting, to go to the North Four Corners Park to see the dueling piano. So thank you for setting that up. Any other questions or comments from the board members?
I have one question. Well, you could tell me later. I did go to the, you know, Fancy Wings. It's always really amazing. And I really don't know much about butterflies, but I know that they don't have a very long life, so probably two weeks, three weeks. I don't know how long they live. But, you know, I'm just curious that how could we transport them? Because I remember that they put the butterflies in the envelope when they send it to us. But that's when they just coming to life. I remember seeing that. I couldn't believe that they come out of envelope, if I remember it correctly.
Yeah, and when you visit, at least the last time I went, there's also like a little, I mean, it's not a refrigerator, but it almost looks like a refrigerator to me that has the pupae hanging in it, and it's fascinating. I don't know how they transport them. That's an excellent question. You're correct, their lives are beautiful but brief.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it's nice to learn more about them. Next time I go there, I will find out that they're going to do that. Really, I didn't know that we actually do that. So that's really a good thing. Thank you.
I'm going to sound redundant, but I love the parks and I love the work that you do. And it's really refreshing to see your staff members have the opportunity to be in the media limelight and star and show off the successful work that they are delivering to the citizens of Montgomery County. It's very nice to see.
Thank you so much. And if I may, Commissioner Bartley, I'm always so impressed with how well they do. They are just, you see them interviewed, and they really know their subject, and they're so engaging. And yeah, I'm always so proud of that.
Well, thank you so much. And we will take a one-minute break and start with our next item, item number seven, Colesville Gardens Administrative Subdivision, where staff is recommending approval with conditions. Thank you. Good afternoon. We're on item number seven, Colesville Gardens Administrative Subdivision 620230160, where staff is recommending approval with conditions. And this afternoon, we have Erin Fowler with the Planning Department presenting this item. Welcome, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you. For the record, Erin Fowler with the West County Planning Division. Today, I'm here to present Colesville Gardens Administrative Subdivision Number 620230160, which proposes to subdivide one existing lot into three lots for three single-family detached residences. Staff is recommending approval of the application with the conditions listed in the staff report. In the map on the right, you can see where this project is located, over on the eastern side of the county. Specifically, the property is located in the 1997 White Oak Master Plan area and is zoned R90. It is surrounded by single-family residences in all directions and is just over a quarter of a mile southeast of a senior living facility. of a mile southeast of a senior living facility and museum site. The property encompasses over half an acre and is currently developed with one single-family home. The site is accessed via Octagon Lane but has additional frontage on Anderson Street. These images show more of the existing conditions around the subject property. Image one shows the existing house proposed for demolition looking southeast along Octagon Lane. Image two is also along Octagon Lane but looking east at the property. Image three is at the corner of Octagon Lane and Anderson Street looking northeast. And image four looks southeast down Anderson Street. The application proposes to create three new lots from one existing lot. Each is just over 9,000 square feet in compliance with the R90 development standards. They are proposing to improve the frontages along both Octagon Lane and Anderson Street by extending the existing curb and gutter and constructing six-foot-wide sidewalks and varying buffer widths. The project also received approval on a forest conservation exemption in July 2022. The project is consistent with the master plan and meets all the findings of the subdivision regulations, zoning ordinance, and Chapter 22A. We have received a few letters from neighbors expressing concerns about the project. The concerns are outlined in more detail in the staff report and are summarized in this bulleted list on the slide. The first concern was about the neighborhood compatibility of the proposed residences and feelings that they would not be cohesive with the surrounding homes. Staff evaluated the proposal and found that it satisfied the R90 development standards, consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Second, residents had concerns about construction impacts of the project. Staff informed the residents that this issue will be addressed by the Department of Permitting Services at the time of building permit review, but is not reviewed by planning as part of an administrative subdivision. The third concern was related to stormwater runoff into a neighboring property. The resident communicated with the Department of Permitting Services, who took the feedback into account when reviewing and approving their stormwater management concept plan. The additional environmental concern related to the tree save plan, which you can see on the slide, as noted on the red dashed line, several trees around the property are either on the property line with the neighbor to the southeast or are not on the subject property but are close enough that the applicant must not damage the roots during construction. Tree protection measures will be provided by a licensed tree professional, and no trees on adjacent properties may be removed without the neighboring property owner's permission. The fourth concern was about potential impacts to the surrounding infrastructure, in particular waste, water and waste management. WSSC performed a hydraulic review as part of the proposed subdivision and determined that the infrastructure had adequate capacity to support this development. Traffic and parking impacts were also noted as a concern. Per the local area transportation review guidelines, subdivisions of four or fewer single-family detached houses generate fewer than five new peak hour vehicle trips. The net two new single-family dwelling units proposed with the application will generate fewer than 50 new person trips in the morning and evening peak hours. As a result, the application is not subject to further traffic analysis. Parking concerns were related to an increased demand for street parking on Octagon Lane with the additional houses. As currently proposed, the new houses will have adequate driveways and parking garages to actually exceed the parking requirements for single-family homes, as defined in the zoning ordinance, by providing four spaces per home between the two-car garages and driveway spaces. As it exists today, no formal parking restrictions are currently in place along the subject property's frontage. The final concern was related to confusion caused by incorrect application noticing. The neighbors received notice about the application six months prior to when the application was accepted. The original notice was issued in error due to forest conservation requirements not being satisfied. This error was communicated to concerned residents, and a second updated notice of the application was sent to all required parties on August 11, 2025, in accordance with the county code. And with that, staff recommends approval of administrative subdivision plan and with the conditions in the staff report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. We first have testimony. We have three, four people in person and one on teams. You can come up. Dan Wilhelm, who's with Greater Colesville Citizens Association. Mary Owens, an adjacent property owner. Betty Landis, an individual. And Conrad Miller, an individual. Could all four of you come up, please? It doesn't matter where you sit. You're welcome in any seat. So maybe they can slide, you can have a microphone, sir? Why don't we start with Dan Wilhelm? Please state your name, and you have, he has six minutes to present your testimony.
I'm Dan Wilhelm. I won't need six minutes. I've been dealing with this for probably three years. There was a lot of confusion at the beginning, a lack of the bad notice and the neighbor, Mary Owens is the immediate neighbor, she's next to me here. But the people representing the applicant would come and talk to her and provide the wrong information. This went on and on and on. Anyway, that all finally got settled. The applicant, over time, changed a lot of things. You know, the one house, it's really an eyesore. I don't think, it's probably in the staff report, but anyway, it's an old, old cinder block building. Anyway, that's been torn down. Originally, they're trying to keep it. And then there's a lot of vegetation that needs to be cleaned out and grading to make it more attractive. All that's been done. So it meets the zoning requirements. I think staff did a good job in working with us and the applicant to try to address a lot of the problems. The neighbors are having a hard time understanding all this stuff. But anyway, so I, we support, GCA supports the staff report.
Thank you so much. Next, Mary Owens, adjacent property owner. And you have three minutes.
Thank you, baby. Take my minute back. Okay. My first concern about the building of the three houses on Octagon Lane would be the foundation of my house over 39 years, at 804 Anderson Street, which has never leaked, nor flooded, nor had any major damages at all. I would suggest that the three houses should be required to put in a catch basin, a water diversion system, to slow rushing stormwater that often overruns the gutters. Although there are currently all type animals running loose behind my house, I'm not looking for an increase of field mouse that has been under control for quite some time and not looking for any more to come back once they start building. It's shown on your blueprint that the back of the houses, I may be wrong, be five to seven feet away from the property line. I would like to request with 300 square foot of the entire property line, at least a six-foot borderboard fence to separate the properties. There's an existing blank fence in the neighborhood that would be very appropriate, whatever I think the cause should be shared. I don't want to come out by my back front yard to look at some mess all the time. It's best to do the right thing now than to suffer later. And I don't know whether they have pets or children, but I do have a very large dog. Therefore, would not want my backyard to be taken for a playground, trash, or any kind, especially during the time of construction. Plus, my upper backyard is a wooded area with large trees and is well-kept, that it would be mistaken for a place to walk pets and a play area. I don't want my trees to be damaged in any way. I would request an obnus or tree specialist to inspect all the trees to ensure no harm is done to the root system, trunk, or branches, especially even during construction. In conclusion, I hope that you would take in consideration my concerns while building the houses because I would not want to take any further action on any of these things that may affect my house nor my property. Also, there's no need to put a sidewalk, you got that, along the bottom of Anderson Street, just my opinion, which will add parking in front of my house and other area homes, a heavy floor traffic, trash, possible drug use, meaning marijuana smoking, and other miscellaneous activities. Even you build the houses as close as possible to the property line, it will still cause problems because the street is not wide enough even now for two cars to pass each other. Thank you for my time, and hopefully you will consider my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Next is Betty Landis.
Hi, I'm Reverend Betty Landis. I live at 13300 Burkhart Street, which is the corner of Burkhart and Anderson. So just three houses down, two houses down from Mrs. Owens. And first of all, I just want to say thank you, on this day especially, on the day after yesterday. It's very important to say thank you to you for serving in the public interest, to the staff for all their expertise and time. It is a time when we need to be able to share that we can disagree about things publicly and do it in a very helpful and kind and meaningful way. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Secondly, as a neighbor, my biggest concern is the density. I understand that it fits technically the requirements, but if you just look at this area, right across the street from it are two properties. And so to keep the structure and the kind of density that we already have in this neighborhood, it just seems to make perfect good sense to do what is right versus what is possible. And I understand that there are a lot of things you have to balance, but we are living in a time where too many people aren't doing anything right and avoiding what is required by the law. But I am here to appeal to you to do what is best for this neighborhood. And that is that we don't have this kind of density just because we can. We already have such difficulty driving down Octagon and driving down Anderson to access and Burkhart, to access our properties. As you all know, who live anywhere in Montgomery County, especially in areas where there has been this increasing density, it's harder and harder for cars to pass. It's harder and harder for people to learn how to even maneuver when there are cars, despite having a garage and a driveway. There are cars being parked on streets, and ours are no different. And so it's already hard enough right now. To increase our density, I believe, will cause a danger to not only the residents, but so many people who love to walk on our streets. Because we are so close and we are a little bit of an enclave away from a very busy street, many people walk their dogs and walk on these streets, even though they don't have sidewalks. And so while I do appreciate the efforts that have been made with the sidewalks and the driveways, I really would like to ask you to reconsider the density of this project and think a little bit more of the longer-term future of this particular neighborhood, which has significant historical precedent in Silver Spring. And I think it's important to not just crowd three houses when two or one would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And last is Conrad Miller. Can you put back up the site plan with the three lots, showing the three lots, sir?
Yes, it's very important. I think when you do that, if you could also show where these houses are, I was going to request it, but I didn't want to stop.
Yeah, but so they can see, because I needed to point out some things that are going to be on that screen. Okay, I'm with her. I'm sorry.
I'm with her as far as the problem with the density. I'm, of the people who are here, I've been in the neighborhood longer than anyone. My family moved to the area in 1964. And when Octagon and Anderson Street were gravel roads, and now, I do not believe that, even though you're saying that it is designed for this, that they foresaw this many people in this area. Because when we moved there, we bought two plots from Mr. Smith, the farmer. The lady next to us, Ms. Templeman, who is not there anymore, she bought some, a lot. And we got a contractor to build a house, 801 Anderson Street. That was my aunt's house. She did the same thing, well, she and my uncle did the same thing. And up Octagon, which was at the time, up until 1972, was called Dixie Lane. All of those homes were cinder block homes. There are some there that have siding on them now, but they just put the siding over the cinder block. But the road has been, Octagon or Dixie Lane has been very narrow. I measured the street, and at its narrowest, it's about 14 and a half feet. Down towards the end, it's 20 feet exactly. But when they put the curb there down at the bottom, it made it so that people who were trying to park on the street, they're going to take up a lot of the street. So I just wanted to show.
Well, take your microphone with you. Can you take your microphone with you, sir? Thank you. Yeah.
All right. I kind of need that. Okay, all right. Now, there's a house here, there's a house here, there's a house here. Now, one thing that you, I don't think that the people who greenlit this, saying that, okay, they have enough parking, that the family, I guess you're expecting to have a husband and wife, maybe two kids, a dog, or whatever. Now, in this area, because of, you know, the prices, a lot of times, and we've already seen this, that you have maybe two families or three families pooling their money to be able to afford the house. So I took pictures of the houses around. You will see how many houses, even the house, these houses right here, now, oh, shit. Okay. Now, there's one, he was able to put parking in back of his house. But then the other one that's on the corner right here, he didn't have enough space. So he's got, you know, maybe five cars, and then in the evening, he has two cars here. What this does is that, you know, there have been near head-on collisions because you have to, when you're parked here, people have to come through, and they have to avoid this car. You have to come on this side. So people come out of Anderson and even Burkhart to go up to the light. Because, see, now, if you go up Burkhart Street, there is no light, and it's the bottom of a hill. So people are going 60 miles an hour so people don't want to get T-boned. So therefore, the way it is right now, it's already too much.
You have about 30 more seconds. You've used all your, suddenly you have three minutes, but I'll give you more. But you have about, can you finish up?
All right. And then one other thing is snow removal. Okay, we're always the last to have our streets cleaned. Octagon is treacherous, just the way it is when we have a snowstorm. I know that we're always at the end. I own five properties in Montgomery County, two in 20906, two in 20905, and that one, 20904. And it's always the last. Those other ones, they've had their streets cleaned three times before we even see a snow truck. So, see, that's the thing. We're like the forgotten child. And so I'm just saying that by putting all of these people, one house, that's okay, maybe, two houses, three houses is going to be a disaster. And you're going to find out afterwards that you're going to have all these problems with either accidents, people that we can't foresee, whether it's going to be drug or whatever. But you're going to see, you're going to see that.
Great, great. Thank you. We'll take your comments into consideration. So lastly, we have on teams, Ms. Ida Jenkins. You're muted now, Ms. Jenkins. You want to unmute your? Thank you.
Okay, you're now? Oh, okay.
All clear.
I'm Ida Jenkins, okay, I'm okay. I'm I'm Ida Jenkins and I'm at eight one seven Anderson Street. And I'm right down the street from this project that's supposed to be built on Octagon. I'm at the foot of of Burkhart Street. My concerns are not that many, because they've been voiced, so many of them have been voiced during, listening to these other people. But mainly the congestion, that there is a whole lot of traffic, that we get traffic going and coming. And some of the people don't even live down this way, but they just kind of take a view of coming down here. They're not only walking their dogs, but they they do their their walking for exercise. And then you have cars, I mean, so many people that we don't even recognize them anymore. So I mean, we used to be a secluded area down there, but now, you know, we have a lot of crowd coming down there now. The parking, I'm very, very concerned about the sidewalk. If you put the sidewalk in there and you and you have the grass that's there now, if you're going to put the sidewalk on the other side of the grass or and then you're still going to have to have parking for these three houses on the street, even if you have parking in their garages and in their driveways, they're going to have guests. Everybody has guests sometime or another. So if they're going to have guest parking on the side, that's going to make it even harder for people to get through. And right now, it's almost like a sandwich. You can't get through there. If someone is coming down Octagon, you have to pull to the side if you can or pull as close to the car that's parked there so that you can scrape by in order to get through to the other street. All right, and then the sewage, we have the problem, oh, I also have the problem too with the three houses being built. I I'm just a disagree with that. One, two houses at the most. My concern is R ninety. R ninety was changed and I knew nothing about it. All right, now, the sewage waste, I've had backup in my house for three times and WSSC never paid for all of it. Part of it was my expense. I waited almost a year this time to get it cleaned up. And so, but what I want to tell you is that I want to make sure that you open up a new sewer line to accommodate these three houses that you hope to build. That's that's one of my requests. And also, I want the traffic, the traffic is very important to me for going up there. It was a narrow street because I'm handicapped, I have to go up to the light, especially when going to the doctor's office. I have to go up to the light because I cannot get out Burkhart to East Randolph Street because of because of the the traffic. And I'm like, Conrad, you can't see that traffic sometime around the bend and I can't scoot out there. I'm not fast enough because I'm handicapped. I go up to the light. And when I go up to the light, it's very hard for me to get through. So as a result, I think that no more than two houses should be built up in 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 that area, especially especially for the way that the houses, the whole neighborhood is laid out. It's not going to be enough room between the the three houses. It's going to now look like single family and three townhouses. I I do request that you consider my concerns.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Jenkins. Thank and thanks to all of you who came. We really appreciate getting community feedback and that's really important. So let's go back to staff and talk a little bit about, given what you've heard today. I mean, there's any things that we, any anything additional we need to take into account? I'm like, one of the, like, WSSC. Do you know why, if they, is this the first you've heard of sewer backups and I'm not sure?
It happened to me too, but but that was some years before. Ms. Jenkins and I are at the same, we're next door. We're at the lowest point of of the sewer system. So yes, that 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 is an issue. I was going to get to that too.
Is it, I'm going to give you one second.
Sewer is right at the end of my driveway.
This, the, like the catch basin?
Main sewer thing.
Okay, all right, so.
We're at, but I'm at the, Ms. Jenkins and I are at the at the lowest point.
Right, right. So maybe that that, you know.
And it happened twice with her.
Oh, yeah.
Are you talking about sewer or stormwater management? I I just want to, because if you are at the bottom of the hill, is it, are you concerned about the rainwater? Or are you concerned about the actual, are you on septic film?
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
We're on city and and we're on, we're over here. Now, we're we're not at the the bottom of Octagon. There there are other people at the bottom of Octagon who are worried about the water coming down. Because that is that is a an issue. When when we have a good rain, that water is coming like it's the Colorado River. And so that that's a, that's an issue. But and and they did put drainage things there, but that's not enough to accommodate a lot of times what what's coming down there. But that's always been a problem.
Okay, so let me just say this. I just asked, is this a new piece? But because based on what I've seen, that that staff has adequately addressed the all the items that we have control over, right? And the other items, but what I will do is when we submit that, you know, we could say that there's some the residents had had addressed, brought up some issues about sewer capacity. And then as a, you know, as they continue through the DPS process, WSSC process, when they submit for a building permit, I think they will evaluate, they'll do a final stormwater management plan. This was a preliminary, was it, that administrative, yeah. So so we will, but based on what I've seen, you know, the staff has adequately addressed. And I just want to point out, you know, we do have, I I'm, it is, I know it's hard to have another house there when you've always had, you know, over the past sixty years. There that, but we do have, in the county, we do have a housing shortage, right? A significant housing shortage. People will want to live in the county, but 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 can't. People are leaving the county because, but this meets the 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 code in terms of what can be built there. And we've gone through, the staff has gone through to mitigate many of the things that a lot of you have talked about. It's it's over, it's, the parking is more than required and and the lot, they met the minimum lot requirements. So I, but I will say that, you know, when we submit our, this would be my recommendation, we submit our rec, you know, our our letter of recommendation that we say that you, it's that, you know, the community has talked about, you know, this, they should look, WSSC, do the final design, should consider the community's comments about sewer sewer and stuff like that.
I have one more.
Well, excuse me, ma'am, not yet, please. Okay? This is talking to staff right now, okay?
Thank you, Chair Harris. I I just wanted to add one clarification for the record, Carrie Sanders. So what's before you today is the administrative subdivision, and we're asking the board to approve that subdivision. It's it is not a recommendation, but it is, you'll be making a vote to either approve or disapprove the subdivision. One other point of, just for those listening and also for the board, page page eighteen, pardon me, nineteen and twenty of the staff report does go in, the staff has to evaluate with the other agencies, the stormwater as well as the water and sewer. So you'll see findings related to those items, and we are finding that those items are met as in terms of our requirements. There is also an approved stormwater management concept plan from MCB, MCDPS. And that's from August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. So I want to make sure that's clear on the record.
No, no, I, yes, thank you for putting on the record, but I realized that I saw that and yes. We've checked all the, you have checked all the boxes for a, to be able to approve this subdivision plan. And and I would recommend that we approve that. But I but I want to make sure that all the board members comment on this, but I on that. Thank you.
Comments? Thanks, Aaron Fowler, for a great presentation. Had an opportunity to read the report and an opportunity to look at the aerial satellite map of the area. I understand the community members' concerns and the value and the goodwill that you've built up in the community. And more importantly, the comfort levels you all have in the community with your properties. One of the things I will say is, although I'm sympathetic to that, I think your adjacent property owner has done a noble thing in seeking to have continued single family homes in the area rather than multi-unit residences. And, you know, my parents grew up in single family homes, predominantly African-American areas. And it seems as though this was an African-American area where they're going to give opportunities for more single family homes in a county where the trend is not to be build single family homes. And although it is an inconvenience to the standard that you've had for many years, there is a new opportunity for other people to share in the beauty of your neighborhood. And it's my hope that in the construction of these homes, that the inconvenience during the time of construction will not be a permanent inconvenience to you and that oftentimes when new construction is there, there are sewage improvements and there are water runoff improvements. And our county and the employees within the planning board and the Office of Permitting do an outstanding engineering job to ensure the maintenance and protection of your existing homes. I am I could just say I'm pleased with three new single family homes with front yards and backyards that will be constructed in the area. And I think that the current landowners needs to be given credit for doing such responsible development.
Let me just add add one more thing. Maybe I can answer some of your concern, hopefully. But this is an administrative subdivision plan. That means that frankly, it could have been approved by staff. So there is, are not, these houses, there are requirements for zoning, okay? We cannot go over zoning. So that means that if a land could be subdivided, they can subdivide it. And we cannot stop it. The only way it could be done, that the zoning change or other requirement change. That right now, that's not what we are talking about. So staff could have have approved this, okay, and not even bring it to us. They brought it to us. The reason that it has come in front of us is you, okay? Because they wanted to give you opportunity to be able to bring your concern to us. And we, and and I give you time if you allow me to finish. Yeah, but actually, I don't have to think. The the chairman can give time. But so we cannot, we cannot tell them that you cannot have three houses. That they, but they have the right to have that. So that is something that we cannot say you cannot do it, because they have the right to do it, okay? That some of the questions that you brought in, like snow removal, that is again, is not something that we do. You need to talk to the highway maintenance from Montgomery County, and I understand your frustration. But those are the ones that they handle that, okay, for subdivision. In regard to WSC review of sewer, again, that is an engineering analysis. And if they say that there is no pressure in the public sewer or public water, those engineers have looked at it and it's fine. So again, it's not something that we do, that we can make a change or anything else in that. The only reason that it is here, because they wanted to make sure that you have the opportunity to bring the your concern. So I suggest that when the requirement for the permitting comes, the Department of Permitting Services coordinate all of this concern that you have for, you know, for stormwater management that you talk about, for protection of trees, all of those is something that they make sure that is done in accordance to the requirement and the policies. Now, if you have any other questions, I leave it to the chairman to decide that if he can allow more time.
Yeah, so each of you, if you'd like to have a comment or a question, you can present your comment or question.
I have one. Why is it so important to put three houses? Is it just because of money or the care of the people?
Yeah.
That's already there? I'm the one that's mainly affected by this.
Yep.
And I just can't understand why it would be, why why three houses?
Well, ma'am, it's, the law says if they meet certain requirements, that they can put, subdivide the slots. And that's what what the the owner is, the applicant's doing. If they follow certain rules, guidelines, that they can do that. And that's the staff checked and they followed those guidelines. And therefore, we have to make a ruling that it is. But we can, and I promise you, staff can send you the the contacts of the folks that will be reviewing the WSSC. We can send you the contact for WSSC, the DPS for, you know, about the fencing. And I know the fencing, I would talk with the the new owner and and you said you will talk to them about a fence there. Even I, maybe there's a mutual agreement to put a fence there once, but but we cannot dictate. We can't mandate that. So we can give you the contacts of the folks that that will be either reviewing this plan when it goes to at the building permit stage, or you can talk to, you know, as as Vice Chairman Pedewam said about snow removal, we can give you the contact for snow removing, give you the the contact for for DP, for the DPS. And so we can do that. We can do that. But by law, the this plan, we we have to say that, yes, they, the applicant met the requirements for these three lots, and that is what we have to do.
Sir, I've been involved over thirty-seven years with the, in my job. My thing is, I have contacted the county for things going on in the neighborhood. Oh, ma'am, five to ten days, somebody get back with you. Nobody. So can you imagine twenty to thirty people, excuse me, maybe that, in the neighborhood new, and I'm right next to them? I came into the neighborhood and got on the the regional with Mr. Wilhyn in charge thirty-nine years ago. I've seen things come and I've seen things go. And it does not, and I'm sorry, I respect all of you, but it does not make sense to put that many houses right there. Because it's going to be problems, sir, and I can assure you, please, I'm, my neighbors know I'm not the problem, but I'm saying they're going to be problems.
Okay, but.
And it's going to affect me more than any of you.
So ma'am, we.
Are you going to buy one of the houses? Let me move where you are and you move where I am.
You're more happy to live in my community.
Yeah, right.
So next, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify, and I do understand the desire to give people an opportunity to have single family homes in this economic environment. So I do appreciate that. But I'm wondering what your advice to us is about this road, because we did have one lot developed with a very huge footprint next door to this. And we have never seen the improvement of Octagon ever since that. So where do we start? And we probably need to start now on getting this road reviewed as to whether or not there is sufficient passage and whether or not we can ask the county to look to see whether or not.
We can give you a contact at DOT.
If you could give us that information, we will start now.
We'll make sure we send you that contact.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. So.
I just have one thing. Hello?
Yes.
This is Ida Jenkins. I have one thing I want to say, and that is about the sewage of the line for the sewage. And I hear someone said that the, that this would be adequate to accommodate these three houses. They make sure that all the pipelines and the sewage line would be enough to to accommodate all the other people would be using it. So if that's the case, how often would you be checking this line to make sure that it doesn't come into the house? At the time mine came in here, May of last year, that came into my house of May of last year, it was at the top. So that meant that nobody, but nobody had been checking it.
Yeah, so ma'am.
So what can, so what can we do, but what can we do, what can we do?
Yeah, we'll give you the.
Make sure that the lines are checked.
Yeah, we'll give you the contact at WSSC and they will tell you the process for that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I promise you, you will get it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep, so, yep, so we're, Commissioner, no, ma'am, we're we're. Commissioner... Ma'am, we're done with this. Ma'am, we're done with this, okay? Commissioner Linden, do you have any questions or comments?
No comments or questions.
Okay, all right. So this... Do I have a motion to approve the Colesville Gardens Administrative Subdivision Plan Number 620230160, where staff is recommending approval with conditions?
I move for approval with conditions. The Colesville Garden Administrative Subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it 4-0. We will take a three-minute break and start again with our next item. Thank you so much.
I just ask all of you, take us...
Starting off with some context, I think this timeline graphic helps set the stage for kind of why we're undertaking a housing needs assessment and preferences survey. Right now, the last needs assessment was completed in 2020 using data from 2018, which obviously gave us a good baseline at the time, but also obviously a lot has changed since then, including a global pandemic in 2020, which led to a lot of economic shifts, which changed household needs and affordability in ways that we're sort of still seeing unfold. And then in addition to that, in 2022, the county adopted Thrive 2050, which emphasizes housing as a human right and provides a list of of housing recommendations, part of that being more diverse and affordable housing options throughout the county, and also just sets a policy direction that we think needs to be matched with updated data and grounded implementation tools. So that brings us to 2025, why we're why we're here today, where we can kind of start to build out this updated data through the housing needs assessment and for the first time a statistically valid housing preferences survey. So I'll pass it to Bhavna to talk a little bit about the distinction between those two and then talk about her scope of work for the housing preferences survey.
Thanks Kayla. For the record, Bhavna is a Bremenian. So to reiterate, we're bringing to you two distinct studies that will both assess aspects of housing conditions in the county, and we're bringing these together because we find them to be quite complementary to one another. So the housing needs assessment takes kind of a macro level approach to understand how much housing we need in the county. And the housing preferences survey takes more of a micro level approach to identify what types of housing that should be and where that that housing should go. So at high level, the housing needs assessment will be using existing data sources to identify broader market trends in housing at the countywide and smaller geographic levels, while the housing preferences survey will use primary data collection by surveying individuals to identify what kinds of housing residents want to see in the county. So I'll now talk about the housing preferences survey in more detail. So this project will primarily be done by an external consultant. The consultant will be responsible for developing the survey instrument, creating a representative sampling plan, administrating the data collection, conducting the data analysis, and producing a report with the survey findings. Planning staff from the housing team will manage the consultant through the entire process and provide technical support as needed, and we'll hold regular check-in meetings with them to get an update on progress and address any of the challenges they have in the process. So upon approval of the scope of work, hopefully today, we'll distribute the request for proposal to select a qualified consultant. And this process generally takes around three months, so we hope to select the consultant by early December. So we have six broad objectives of the survey. The first is to gather a representative and statistically significant sample of county residents. So this is really going to involve a pretty robust methodology and sampling plan that the consultant will be developing. And by ensuring a representative sample, we're hoping to hear from historically marginalized communities and residents that we don't usually see participate in the planning process. Our second objective is to collect data on housing preferences, priorities, needs, concerns, and challenges, and we're really looking to hear from residents on their individual experiences with housing in the county. Using the data, we aim to document the top housing preferences at the county level, but also across subgeographies and different demographic groups such as race, age, income, housing tenure. We recognize that there are varied housing experiences across these different groups, so we want to parse that out. And given the forward-looking purpose of this project, we aim to use the findings to describe implications for meeting the housing need in the county. All of this information will be compiled into a detailed report to highlight and document the county's top housing preferences. And finally, another objective is to communicate these findings to the public, particularly given that the data is coming directly from them. So we'll work with our communications team to raise awareness about the facts, the data, and the results from the study. So to reach these objectives, there are a variety of topics we'd like to ask in the survey. Like I mentioned, the consultant will be developing the survey, but planning staff will offer guidance to ensure that the objectives are met. So on this slide are some modules that we hope to include. The first is demographics. So this includes individual characteristics of the participants, including age, gender, race, ethnicity, as well as household characteristics, including income, household size, tenure. And this will really help ensure that the sample is representative of the demographics of the entire county. After the survey is completed, additional weighting might be done if the random sample does not reflect the county demographics, so that will be considered through the sampling plan. Another topic is satisfaction with current housing. So this includes the likes and dislikes of individuals' current housing situation. We want to hear about neighborhood preferences and characteristics. So what neighborhood qualities are most important to them? Is it safety, schools, access to public transit, proximity to parks, something else? In addition to neighborhood characteristics, we are interested in learning about housing characteristics. What housing qualities are most important to individuals? Is it the size of the house, the type, what amenities do they prioritize? Another topic, very important now, is about housing affordability. So how much are they currently paying for their housing? Are they cost burdened? Are they worried about housing affordability in the future? Another topic we want to explore is housing challenges. So what are the major challenges they face when it comes to housing? Is it the affordability like we talked about, or is it availability, or is it something else that we should be considering? And the last two, we want to look into plans for future housing. So are people planning to move in the short term or stay in their current housing for the long term? And what are the barriers and/or motivations to do so? And lastly, housing policy. Where do they stand on housing policy issues in the county, including zoning changes or rent stabilization, as examples? So we're asking the consultant to provide three main deliverables through the end of the project. These will mostly meet the objective of raising awareness about the facts, data, and findings using communication strategies. The first is a full report that really takes that takes the whole project into account, so starting from background to the survey approach and methodology, findings, and offering some policy implications. The second product, given the direct participation of the community in the study, will be more summary materials, such as one-pagers, that are more easily understandable for the broader public. And lastly, the planning board and council presentations are part of the scope of work, so we'll be asking for a slide deck for these presentations. So just to walk through a timeline of this project, it will last through fiscal year 26 and be completed in September of 2026. As I mentioned, the RFP process takes around three months, so this is what we'll be working on through November. After procuring the consultant, by early December, the survey instrument will be developed and implemented in early of next year. Data preparation and analysis will take place through April, followed by some preliminary findings with planning staff and leadership here. And then a full draft of the report will be developed by the consultant by June with final planning board and council presentations planned for next July, and then the final report to be completed by September of 2026. So the housing needs assessment follows a similar timeline, so I'll pass it back to Kayla to discuss that.
Can I just ask you a question in this survey? When we do the survey, you said that you're going to go for the whole county, and then you have different criteria regarding age, ethnicity, and geographical location and things like that, that I totally support. I think it's a good idea. I think we should stick with people rather than interest group, because interest group, I don't know, but I think that when we do survey, if we want to really think what people need and what their priority are, I think that we should stick to people, not what we think is ideal, because then it's not going to work. We want to get some survey that give us data that is real, that people want. And at least we could have that information, and then we could see that how it works out. I don't know what is the process of survey, how are you going to pick people? If the interest group are part of it, or is it that it's just people? You try to figure out and just talk to people.
So this will, the pedestrian master plan did a countywide survey a few years ago, and they're consulted, they also use an external consultant for that, and they use address-based sampling, where they sent out a certain number of postcards to specific addresses. And that was a random sample of addresses, and then they, I think, got about four or four percent return rate on those addresses. So a lot will be sent out, and then we will take what we get and see how that represents the county and do more targeting sampling based on that.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that, that I don't know if the four percent is enough. I think we have to, when you do your scope of work, maybe we should provide some kind of incentive for people that they feel that we could get a return. I do not know. I think we want to get something like about 10, 15 percent. Is that possible, at least?
Lisa Kavoni, for the record, so four percent is actually a pretty good response.
It is. I think their their goal was two percent, and they got four percent, which is pretty high.
Yeah, for the record, I received the postcard for pedestrians survey, and I was part of that four percent. And then they sent up a follow-up one, and you could be entered in a giveaway to receive a gift card. So we will work with the consultant that we will select to develop a robust methodology to make sure that we're targeting countywide and also the people that we want to hear from, the groups that are not traditionally represented in the planning process. But we have, since we have not, you know, selected the consultant yet, we're still, we will work with them to develop that methodology.
I don't know if this is the right place to, right time to ask this question. I'll just, I'll just bring it up now, but if there's a different time to talk about it, we can, we can punt it. And as I'm saying this, I realize that this is sort of maybe a complicated from a sampling standpoint. I think it'd be interesting to, to hear from people who don't live in the county and understand some of their needs and preferences, too. So much of what we do is trying to welcome more people, and a lot of those people are just like the people who live here. But the people who can't come here will never, you know, will never hear from them, right? Will never understand why they weren't able to come here. And so I don't know if that's, I don't know if it's possible to think of this in the tur, in terms of like, like you mentioned, like, are there specific demographic groups, people with different interests or characteristics, and have some version of like a regional subsample as part of this, if that's something that's ever considered? But I think, I think it could be potentially interesting and revealing.
I agree with you. I think that it would be very interesting. The only pause that I have is we're limited with our funding. This is a very expensive endeavor to get a statistically valid survey, so I think that we could look at the scoping process and see kind of what our budget allows, and then we can take it from there.
Yeah, I think both points are well noted, and we, we are going to cast a pretty wide net in soliciting responses to the RFP. We're doing a full-blown RFP process so we can reach as many consultants as possible. And once we get responses, I think these consultants might have vastly different proposals to do the same type of work, which is pretty common. So when we evaluate those, we'll definitely take these points into consideration and try to align the selection criteria with with these in mind.
Yeah, one thing that you may want to look that if, in regard to taking care of what, you know, Commissioner Linden is saying, is that if, like, for example, Howard County, we're talking about neighboring. If they want to come, usually they may be neighboring, rather than people that are coming out of a state for a job or something, that's not, I don't think that's part of this. It's people that for some kind of preference, not for a job change or something, they're coming. Maybe, for example, Howard County has done a survey similar to this, a recent survey. So they could look to see that if any of the neighboring counties, they have done a similar survey, that we could get, pull some of those information. If they are up to date, they last within a few years, you know, for three or four years, it wouldn't change that much, then that helps. We don't have to start the wheel again if it's already done.
That's a great point. So other jurisdictions have done surveys. The city of Alexandria, for, for example. I think that the biggest difference is a lot of jurisdictions that do surveys, they're not statistically valid surveys. So there are surveys of preferences, and it's kind of like a public meeting where those that have an interest reply to the survey, instead of getting representative samples from across the county. So we will, you know, like I said, we're very early in this process. We will take all of the board's comments into consideration as we continue to scope this out, and this is a really helpful conversation, I think, to have at this point. But we're, again, we're very early in this process, so this is a helpful dialogue.
And I would just say, add that maybe one of the things that we can think about is, to Commissioner Linden's point, not just getting information back from people who live outside, but maybe people who work here, who don't live here. There might be a way through some employer surveys or something that the county's already doing, something that we can maybe tag along to, or just somehow kind of separate from this, a separate effort that we can pursue at some point to try to get, you know, information from folks who live here, who work here, but maybe have tried to live here but can't. And so we'll see what we can do, come up with. It might be outside the scope of this, but it, there could be others.
So we have, Commissioner Hedrick has his name up, has his hand up and his name up, so.
Both say. No, I, actually, y'all, y'all covered most of the things that I was going to sort of mention. I think to Commissioner Linden's point, there is an inherent selection bias, right? We're, we're sampling the folks that have already managed to make it here, right, into Montgomery County, and there is a question of sort of, what are the unknown and unseen barriers to making it into Montgomery County? And I think we have a, you know, we have some ideas about what that might be. But there, there is a sort of inherent selection bias there with our sample. It's not going to sample people who considered or would have, you know, the probability, there's a distribution there that we're not sort of picking up. I think it's worthwhile to look at that. I think, yeah, with, to Lisa's point, if it's not a statistically valid sample, it's a real apples-to-orange comparison, particularly if we're starting, if we're trying to get something that's statistically, statistically valid. And then just to the last point that I had that was sort of addressed already, really the, the distribution of the sample and its makeup, how close its makeup is to essentially what is in Montgomery County is more important than sort of the number of people that respond. Like getting four percent, like I think Lisa said, actually pretty good, and I'm kind of impressed that they managed to get that. But the weighting of the sample and the stuff is what will be more useful for making it more statistically valid than sort of, you know, just a online poll comment or something like that.
Great, great. So why don't we keep going, and then at the end, we can ask more questions. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So yeah, thanks Bhavna. We'll now talk a little bit more about the housing needs assessment portion. So for roles and responsibilities, sort of unlike the housing preferences survey, the majority of the needs assessment will be completed in-house by staff from the housing team. Specifically, the team will be doing the data collection and analysis of current housing conditions and the housing gap analysis, which we'll kind of talk about that in a couple more slides. And then planning staff will also work with and manage a consultant for the final element of the housing needs assessment, which is projections of future housing demand. So, you know, I think at a high level, the housing needs assessment aims to understand how well Montgomery County's housing system is serving current residents from a sort of macro level data perspective, and then also think about how it might need to evolve, or begin to think about how it might need to evolve to meet future demand. A key focus throughout is equity, not just in like the data we collect and analyze, but in how we interpret it. You know, we want to ask who benefits from the current system, who doesn't, and how can our future policies ensure that our housing strategies are fair and inclusive? To that end, we're using this opportunity to examine disparities in housing access, particularly for residents experiencing high housing costs or cost burden, overcrowding, or any other sort of issue related to the housing system. We'll disaggregate findings by geography and by demographic groups to try and surface patterns that may not be visible in larger countywide averages. And then these results will inform future policy, investment, and planning decisions. So the analysis, like I sort of alluded to already, breaks down into three main parts. First, the analysis of current housing conditions, which will focus on outlining the current state of housing in the county from, you know, a data perspective, look at who lives here and in what kind of housing. We'll look at a lot of different housing factors, such as age of housing, unit size, tenure cost, the list goes on. And we'll pay particular attention to analyzing, analyzing which groups face the biggest shortfalls when it comes to housing access. And then we'll compare through the housing gap analysis what people need and quantify kind of where the biggest mismatches are, like if households are paying too much for rent, or they're unable to find homes that are appropriately sized for their family size, we kind of try to identify where those gaps are and where they need to be filled. And then the last piece is the housing projections. As I mentioned, we'll be working with a consultant, the National Center for Smart Growth, to project future housing demand to 2050 in five-year increments, to help us anticipate how the county's needs as it relates to housing will change over time.
So can I ask a question here? Are we going to analyze that for people that they work and they have to drive? So like they work in downtown Bethesda, but in downtown DC, but they live, you know, somewhere in Clarksville, for example?
Yeah, like how far people are having to commute?
Commute.
Yeah.
So that's an important thing, that if we want people to live where they work, so we have to see that what are the barriers and what is the condition right now? How many people we have that they work within the county, they drive within the county to work, and also they drive outside the county to live? Okay? I think those statistics and information is helpful and find out that how can we bring people here and how can the people that are already here help them to live where they work or, or drive less, you know, five miles or 10 miles, rather than 15, 20 miles that they have to drive? That would be something that I'm sure everybody wants.
Yeah, that, that data is definitely available and something we can, can look at, for sure. Okay. So, you know, like we've reiterated, we're in the very early stages of this, but each piece of the analysis will have and use slightly different tools that will likely evolve as the results come about, and we're kind of learning more as we go. But at a, at a baseline, we'll use cross tabulations, mapping, and time series analysis to explore trends throughout the county and identify if certain communities and groups are experiencing greater housing stress than others. And I think also in this current housing conditions section, we'll, to the extent possible, do some regional comparisons to see what things are looking like in some of our peer jurisdictions and compare them to Montgomery County. And then the gap analysis will, like I sort of alluded to, match available units at different price points to the number of households that can afford them. There are kind of a few methodologies that are used for a housing gap analysis, and then we'll kind of review all those methodologies and decide which one fits best for, for us, likely focusing on the one that was used in the 2020 housing needs assessment. But we just want to make sure that we're using the best methodology, and so we're going to do a little research before we select the methodology there. For the future demand section, the consultant will use economic and demographic trends to project how housing needs may change, and this will include income, age, tenure, household size, and other factors. They'll also produce a research brief exploring broader economic shifts that could impact housing policy. Obviously, the region is continuing to change and will continue to change, so just kind of have them think about what things could look like from an economic perspective as well as housing.
Can I ask another question? So, okay, you come on the deliverable. We get the gap. We say, okay, we have, this is the cap, gap exists. Does this deliverable include a magic box for some kind of solution that it is real within the demography of our people, something that maybe we should provide, you know, array of solutions that we see which we could actually deliver with, you know, with less resistance, that we could actually eliminate some of these gaps? So I'm hoping that when we do this study, we just don't come that these are the gap. We say that, okay, these are the gaps, but these are some recommended solution depending on different circumstances. And is it including?
So I, I think, and I'm going to look for nodding from the team here, but I think that a lot of that will end up being outside the scope of this specific effort. And this is a, is a massive undertaking that is really informative and can help give us a better sense of what our needs are so that we do have policies that are appropriate for what our needs, that, and it answers, you know, a lot of times we're hearing people with a lot of things we've been pursuing over the last few years on the housing front, but do you even know if people need that? Or do we have, is there interest or the need for that type of housing? Do people want it? That gets back to the preferences. So this will help us be able to answer those questions, where a lot of what you're asking for could really come into play is in the production of a housing functional master plan, which is something that we would like to work towards. This is kind of a prelude to that. So with a lot of our functional plans, so it was mentioned earlier, the, the survey that was done for the pedestrian master plan, in addition to that, we spent almost two, two and a half years, I think, going out doing data analysis to, to be able to put together the pedestrian level of comfort, so that we knew for every single intersection, every single street segment, what type of pedestrian infrastructure existed. This, in some ways, is kind of like the, the pedestrian level of comfort analysis for, on the, on, for our housing functional master plan. It gives us the data that we need to be able to make the recommendations for, through a future functional plan.
I totally get it. The only problem with that is that the time. By the time we do the functional plan, this data is stale, okay? And, and we had this problem with implementation of capital improvement. Yeah, I, I totally understand. But I'm just thinking that this, this could be easily just be solutions that have been done other places. So they could just list things that are possibilities. I think the consultant probably could look at the higher level and say, okay, these are the gaps, and these are some ideas or suggestions that we could, you know, fill these gaps or reach the idea. Because the, the shortage of housing is real, and we want to do it something sooner than later. So some may be low-hanging fruit or something that we could do fast, just something to think about. Maybe we could just do it when you are with the experts to do it, so I don't know.
Yeah, maybe once you get the data, maybe it could be very easy to see if there, you know, if, if there's a big mismatch, maybe at least, maybe we shouldn't be doing this policy, we should be doing, I mean, and, and something may come to light very easily as you, but what, we'll wait till you get the data, but if there are things, I'm thinking you're saying if there's ways that something comes to light and you can make some easy recommendations.
And I think that'll be in, in order of conversation with the planning board as we present this data to you, and we have these conversations about the implications of that data. The housing needs assessment is largely going to be an in-house done research project, which is a significant, you know, resource-heavy endeavor, but I think that it will lead to policy implications that we, you know, probably are unaware of because we need to update this housing needs assessment.
And also, I think the data, as we get the data, we'll be sharing it with the ongoing master planning teams, so that'll be another venue to use the data to come up with strategies and have those strategies be more defensible because they're rooted in real-time data.
Thank you, everyone. So similar, you know, kind of mirroring the housing preferences survey, there will be three deliverables. First, a full report, including the detailed analysis, methodology, maps, visualizations to document the conditions, gaps, and projections. And then second, we'll also work with our communications department to produce summary materials that are more easily digestible. A lot of this information is really complicated, and we just want to make sure that people understand it. And then finally, we'll also have a presentation deck to walk the results with the planning board council and other stakeholders. And then, like Bhavna said, the timeline is basically identical to the housing preferences survey, where we're kind of moving at the same time. So once the scope is approved, we will start, in earnest, start data collection process and then move. and then move on to synthesis and primary findings, hopefully by February through April. And then we'll start doing some internal briefings in March. And then draft report and presentation development in in May through June. And then the planning board and council presentations in July. And hopefully produce a final draft by September 2026. I think we've covered a number of questions, but if there are any more?
Yeah, great. Thank you. This is definitely needed. And so the faster you can get going, the better off we are. Couple of questions on, you talked about in your scope about projections by area. And I was wondering, how how deep are we going to get on the area? Meaning that will they line up somewhat with, remember, we did some, you did some housing projections? And you and we divided out which jurisdiction should get what, like Tacoma Park and whatever? Are we going to, so that use those same geographies? You know, you have it overall, but then you, as you do, or so that could help inform? Remember, we did this, was it about a year ago?
Are you thinking of the local housing targets project when we did it by planning area?
By planning area? So 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 that you don't have to do double work? I mean, are you going to still do those similar planning areas? So or are you going to do, how deep will you get? I'm just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I think it depends on, so the National Center for Smart Growth is doing the projections piece. And they're doing the data acquisition. So I think it depends on how granular the data can go. But I think it goes to the census tract level. Is that right, Lisa? Do you know?
So the the forecast data that the, so there's census data and there's forecast data. The forecast data can go to the TAS level. The census data is generally goes to the the tract level data. So we'll work with NCSG to figure out the best geographies to use for projecting, you know, the the future housing demand.
Great. Great. Thank you. And the last, another question is, you're, I just want to make sure, your timeline seems a little aggressive. But if you really feel that you can meet that, you know, just to manage expectations and that just, because you said 90 days to hire a consultant, that's really in the year, right? And and they get started beginning of the year. So I'm just saying, if you feel you're you're really good with a little leeway, that's great. But just just maybe you want to look at that one more time.
Yeah, I think we did, we amended our timeline and gave us a couple of extra months already. But it is definitely something to consider, especially because RFP process. We're hoping we'll get a consultant by the end of November, but.
Okay, great, great. And they, you started about the, in the preferences survey, about, you know, how do we know about who's not at the table? And maybe, I know you will do your best with the consultants to make sure, figure out a way. But maybe once you get the data, I mean, maybe you could get a feel for who's not at the table. And it maybe it will just come to light. It may or may not, but 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 maybe once the, I know you know that, because you had mentioned that 26,000 middle-income folks or middle-income have left the county over a certain period of time. And so that's, so those, I'm not sure who are all in that piece, but we know that they left. And so maybe they won't be, some of those, we don't know in what categories. But but I guess, at the end of the day, we'll, maybe we'll get a feel and then maybe have to adjust a little bit later, once we know who is at at the table.
Right, there's waiting accounted for in the methodology that will hopefully help if we don't meet the exact representation of the county.
That's all my questions. Have a great, thank you for doing this. This is so important to help, you know, give some data to when we say this is really needed. It's informed based on the housing needs preference and and then looking at the gap analysis. So thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have one more comment. These deliverables, who are they for? And the reason I'm asking that is that if we want, I think, okay, I'm going to tell you what I think you could tell me if it's right or wrong. I think that if we want to get people on our side, we have to make sure that they understand the deliverable, okay? I really like your idea of one pager. Let's make it as simple as possible that everyone can understand that. When the, when it is simple enough that it makes sense for people and they see that this this is supported by real data, then we get more people on our side. So when we prepare the deliverable, my recommendation is that to make it simple for general public that they can understand, not just for the planners to use that for master planning. Because you guys can make sense of all of those. Even some of those data comes, I look at them, I get confused. But, you know, I know that for you guys, it's much easier and better it is. But I think that especially the one pager that you're talking about, because it should be simple, it should be short, and it should be easy to understand and convey the message that you want to send for general public. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, and I think that's sort of, you know, I think the first deliverable that we both mentioned was kind of the comprehensive, maybe maybe the planner document that the planners will use. And then the number two is kind of like what we're hoping that the public can understand and and also be digestible. Because you're you're right, people, it's complicated. And we want people to be able to understand it and understand that there is like a housing crisis and that this is really important.
Yeah, that's important. I think people understand that. But when they see the data and why we are doing what we are doing, I think that it may make more sense.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons we're also excited about doing the housing preferences survey along with the needs assessment to kind of ground some of the data in like real lived experiences throughout the county. Yeah, thank you.
So I'm really excited about this. I can't wait to see the results. And so one question just about the timeframe and schedule. I think I saw some preliminary findings sometime like early in the next year. Is that is that something that we will see, we'll get a preview of? Or is the plan not to come back to us until it looks like July or, you know, when 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 it's more sort of polished and and ready?
So I think the internal briefing, so synthesis and preliminary findings, you know, kind of we'll be working on some preliminary findings and then hopefully present them to the planning board in those internal briefings in March and April of this year.
Gotcha. Cool. Sounds good. Two other quick questions, I think, I think I have two in my head right now. So one, coming back to the geographic scope issue. And specifically when it comes to demand and the forecasting. I think it could be interesting to, and let me know if this has been part of the conversation. But I think it'd be interesting to sort of try to to infuse this a little bit into the extent that we can into like existing master plans. If we can sort of craft areas that roughly fit master plan boundaries that are ongoing now or upcoming. And but beyond that, in terms of like public communication materials, could there be opportunities to create, and I know this takes time and and monies and and, yeah, and obviously mostly time and money. But could there be opportunities to create kind of sub-geography messaging materials for kind of prepping for community meetings of various types that we can kind of just be prepared to bring with us? Like if and when we have a meeting in, you know, an area that has a particular civic association, you know, even if the if the boundaries don't perfectly align, just something that sort of speaks to them. It's like a more precise messaging document for them if and when we have interactions with them moving forward.
I think we can definitely work on that. You know, we have a great communications department that has, will be a key and integral part of this project. And we can definitely work with them and our master planning teams. You know, the great thing is both Kayla and Bhavna are also embedded in our master plan teams. So they're able to kind of, you know, take that knowledge that they learned from the housing needs assessment and the preference surveys and carry that over to the master plans that we're we're working on. I think, you know, when we talk about this project, it will be as much as a communications project as it is a research and policy project. You know, part of the reason we want to do this preference surveys is because we think housing is more popular than, you know, the people that show up to a public meeting that have the time. And, you know, it's just really important about, like Commissioner Pedeween said, about how we communicate that information and how, you know, we're relaying that information to the public through all of our processes, whether it's master plans or other policy documents.
Yeah, sounds good. And so my final, just quick comment, coming back to what Commissioner Pedeween said before. I think I think what you were talking about before, understanding kind of origin destination with jobs and where people live. I agree that I think that could be really interesting when paired with things like the preferences survey to understand, like, are people actually living in in areas that put them in close proximity to the things that they are describing as important to them? And as as I'm sure you know, there's, you know, there's good data sources that speak to, you know, origin, destination, and LEHD and stuff like that. I know it's not strictly housing-related, but I do think maybe interesting flavor, context, stuff like that. So just something to consider. So, yeah, thanks for that comment before.
Yeah, I will say, I know Kayla mentioned that there are a lot of like data sources that have that data. But it's not a topic I had included in the preferences survey. But it's something we could definitely talk with the consultant about of gathering information in the survey too about that.
Great. Well, you can see how interested we are in this upcoming surveys. So thank you so much. Hearing no other questions or comments, do I have a motion from the board to approve the scope of work for the housing needs assessment and housing preferences survey as discussed today?
I move to approve the scope of work for the housing need assessment and housing preferences survey as just submitted by staff.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, 5-0. We're gonna take a break and come back this evening at 7 o'clock where the Montgomery Parks, who will have a public hearing to receive public input for their upcoming fiscal year 2732 CIP. So the board will be taking testimony for Parks on this upcoming CIP. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. It's September 11th and we're starting our evening planning board meeting. Thanks to everyone who came out tonight to share their thoughts on the Montgomery Parks Capital Fiscal Year 2732 Improvement Program. So, we have 23 speakers tonight. We will call up everyone in groups. When your name is called, please come up and take a seat in the front table. Individuals have three minutes to speak and organizational representatives have six minutes. You'll see a timer in front of you. Please make sure you conclude your remarks when the timer finishes. Thank you. So, we've already called up our first group, Jennifer Trigillo, Eileen Finnegan, Allison Gillespie, Casey Anderson, Chris Erwin, and we have room for one more. Is Alpha Mara here? Please come up, sir. Okay, welcome to all of you and we'll start with Jennifer Trigillo.
Okay, can you hear me there?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Jennifer Trigillo, a lifetime Montgomery County resident and home and business owner. Our parks play a vital role in building strong communities, protecting our environment, ecosystems, watersheds, and providing community spaces for physical activities and social gatherings for all ages and all abilities through active and passive recreation, participation, observation, and reflection. In our current difficult times and in any times, parks are more needed than ever. With all of that and more in mind, I'm requesting the following from Montgomery County Park's upcoming budgets. Full funding for implementing the updated Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan, including rehabilitating aging facilities and creating the new Wheaton Action Sports Park, including spaces that offer a broad array of action sports to be able to appeal to, inspire and engage all types of people of all ages, body type, skill levels, et cetera, offering progressive challenges from beginner through intermediate and all the way up to advanced in a welcoming and safe environment. This will ensure appeal to the casual, impromptu, and to planned and high-skilled competitive use, all of which will help our local economies. Please allocate and spend the money to hire the appropriate experts for designing and building the pump track, skate park, and the bouldering and climbing areas. I cannot stress enough, from first and second-hand experience, the gargantuan impact these choices could have in the reality that these features will be safe and usable by all skill levels and all ages, if designed and built correctly, like the differences in eating ice cream or soup with chopsticks versus a spoon for an unskilled or untrained user. And please fully fund family-friendly spots in the action sports park and in all of our parks so that kids, kids of all ages, parents and caretakers can enjoy our parks together with all of our family, chosen family, and community members. As in make sure they're accessible for all, have shade, water, bathrooms, seating, resting spaces, lights, electricity, maybe even Wi-Fi and more. And ensure that the park is safely accessible and connected to the public transportation and via all other alternative transportation, pedestrian, including wheeled modalities. Please fully fund our continued Vision Zero plans for our entire region and fully fund and build a strong, safe, and accessible regional trail network, including both natural and paved surfaces, and work to connect Montgomery County trails with surrounding counties as well as DC and Virginia. Please reaffirm your prior recommendation to fully support increasing annual capital funding for natural surface trails to 1 million. Please fund our park's new solar initiatives and continue our park's commitment to watershed and ecosystem protections and improvements. Please fund everything I've asked for and more. I appreciate the duties and responsibilities with which you have been entrusted to uphold and the hard decisions that you were faced with. And I thank you for your time, attention, hard work, dedication, and your careful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next is Eileen Finnegan.
Yes, I have some slides. I am Eileen Finnegan. Hopefully the timer hasn't started yet. Well, I'm waiting for the slides. But that's okay. I guess I can start.
Well, no, we'll start when you're ready.
There it is. I am Eileen Finnegan for the third time, a longtime advocate for the Hillendale Local Park. Here's a look at Hillendale. It's on New Hampshire Avenue between the Hillendale Volunteer Fire Department and the We Achieve Facility, which used to be called CHI. It includes a big active area, but a huge number of acres in wooded land with trails. The new Hillendale Park has been a great success in attracting residents all along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. Previously, the park was used very lightly. Now residents south of the Beltway from the Avery and Chateau Apartments in Oakview come regularly. People from the enclave and the garden apartments in White Oak use Hillendale daily. These, the large pavilion with bathrooms draw church groups from Rockville and Langley Park. Our local park has a huge catchment area. With the construction of the HOC Hillendale Gateway Complex, which is now underway, there soon will be more users and families using Hillendale Park. Second slide, please. I'd like to take special note of the work that was recently completed to improve and reopen the rectangular field, which just opened on September 2nd. Thanks to the staff for all the remedial work for this field over the summer. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that the field will be doing well going forward. But also note that local residents have begun to make the park their own. There's a new garden at the entrance to the trail at Green Acres Drive in Hillendale and a new free little library for young readers. Next slide, please. There are some spaces in the park that really do need some attention, however. And you can see that some of it looks a little dismal. And you can blame the drought, but it's dismal even when it rains. Next slide. Here is a graphic showing the park along with a list of 12 modest improvements which I ask parks to consider. These suggestions are a punch list to the major renovations completed two years ago. The play equipment for young children is great, but additional amenities for older middle school children are needed. Please consider like monkey bars or a climbing wall or a small skate park. Improvements to the two green spaces would also allow kids and their parents to kick a ball and practice basic skills. Seating for parents watching their children on the equipment is desperately needed as are shade canopies to keep slides a little cooler in the summer. Some users would welcome markings on the distance markings. Please look at the list I've provided and determine how these small capital items might be best added and provided to the park. An item which I'm not eager to bring up is the last slide. It's trash. Trash is an issue. And you can see it. I really hope that you address getting children to use trash containers early on by providing kid-friendly trash containers. I like the frog myself. Finally, finally, please consider providing the park at no charge for civic groups that have community-wide events like National Night Out. Just this past September, we had to pay $350 to have a huge gathering at the park to support the neighborhood. I would really appreciate that if you start taking a look at providing some no-charge events for citizen associations. And I thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Finnegan. Next is Allison Gillespie.
Hello. Good evening. So, some of you know I currently serve on the Board of Montgomery Parks Foundation and I also serve on the Board of Bike Maryland. And in the past, I've served as a Neighborhood Association President, PTA President, and I'm the proud mom of two young adults who graduated from nearby Einstein High School a few years ago. But tonight, I'm here speaking for myself and not representing any of the groups I volunteer with. It's just that those experiences have informed and shaped my perspectives on the CIP. So, I'm here to support funding for both park refreshment and Wheaton Regional Park. First of all, about park refreshment broadly, my own neighborhood benefited greatly from it over the years and I know how desperately the funding is needed. It isn't sexy. It isn't like a bricks and mortar style project with a ribbon cutting. But I know in my own neighborhood about 18 years ago, the playground had been a site of some minor arson and it stood burned for years and monkey bars were known to come off in the hands of children while they played. And we had to have the park's repair number on our phones to report problems all the time. We did get refreshment there and it's now one of the most popular places in the Georgia Avenue corridor, but the wait was long. And I really salute the current Parks Administration for trying to do updates on a more regular and consistent basis as it's really needed when parks are so heavily used. It's really important. So, secondly, I'd like to provide my support for funding for Wheaton Regional Park Master Plan, especially for the Action Sports Park. You know, more people live close to Wheaton Regional than any other regional park in the area. And most of them live in apartment buildings with little outdoor space. It's an equity-focused area with large numbers of students who qualify for free and reduced meal plans. And you have to imagine that for many in my larger community, it's not a nice to have amenity, but a need to have space. Without Wheaton Regional, many of my neighbors would have no space to relax outdoors over the weekend. But because of that space, they have a place to picnic, they have a place to go relax at Pine Lake, and a place to enjoy the trees or ride the tiny train. It's more than a backyard space. It's the heart of the community and it's loved, but it really needs our attention. Look around when you leave this building and you'll notice, as you probably have noticed many times as good planners, that we are short on good green space in downtown Wheaton. But nearby, we have this space and it's really well-loved. The plan for the Action Sports Park is fantastic. The Parks Department did a great job. There's been a huge demand for skate parks and I can tell you that there's a giant need for this kind of instant exercise in a community like this where people don't have to pay registration or an entry ticket or sign up for some fancy soccer travel league where they can just show up and get exercise and be teenagers. And that's really, really important. There aren't enough space for middle school and teenagers and this designed space is great. Most of the parks facilities currently there, especially in the Rubini Complex, were designed in the 60s and the 80s. And since then, a lot's changed in the community. It's really good that Parks is trying to address the changes and the reality of the community and remake the park to the county's needs. So, thanks for taking time to consider my request.
Yes, thank you for your testimony. Next is Mr. Anderson, representing Mid-Atlantic Off-Road Enthusiasts.
Thank you. I'm Casey Anderson with more. I want to thank you for supporting our request two years ago to increase the natural surface trails budget from $500,000 a year to $1 million a year. As you know, the council bumped it to $800,000 and I hope this is an easy ask this year for you to support renewing that request to get to $1 million a year. We also support the Wheaton Action Sports Park. Dave McGill and I were just over there tonight, took a little bike ride around the bike park just before coming here. That's a great way to get relaxed for some late evening testimony at the planning board. You should try it sometime. We also support the Pepco Trail and more infrastructure and trail-related amenities for both hard surface and natural surface trails. You're going to hear tonight, and I hope it's not news to you, that natural surface trails and trails in general are the number-one most requested amenity every single time the Parks Department surveys park users and residents of Montgomery County. Usually they're one and two or one and three, but collectively, they represent by far the most requested amenity or recreational feature in the entire park system. It's also a great bang for the buck because for $1 million a year, sounds like a lot of money even in the inflationary world we live in today. But I think as Andy Frank would tell you, most park projects, you can't turn over shovel the dirt for less than $1 million. For $1 million a year, you can maintain and expand on what's already a really excellent park system to shoot towards making it truly world-class, which is a goal that's identified in the PROS Plan. Speaking of the PROS Plan, natural surface trails and trails in general tick every box that PROS identifies as a priority where the Parks Department needs to go, which is to enhance social connection. That's about bringing people together on the trail, some of those casual social encounters. I know Mr. Hedrick is a skeptic of the Robert Putnam book, but I think the social capital benefits of bringing people together and those sort of informal social encounters is underrated. It also connects neighborhoods to neighborhoods and that's one of the reasons why it would be beneficial to increase the natural surface trails budget because there are still neighborhoods that don't have convenient access to natural surface trails. And if you think about some of the neighborhoods, for example, Eileen Finnegan was mentioning the area around Hillendale in East County. The northwest branch cuts through a big part of the county and actually divides some communities with more natural surface trail connections across stream valleys. Neighborhoods that are physically proximate together can actually be connected and people can interact and get to know and understand that they're right next to a neighboring community that they may not have occasion to visit very often. Last point I want to make about this is that PROS identifies vigorous physical activity as one of the things the Parks Department has not always delivered for people of every age group. We think of parks as something that are for little kids or maybe teenagers to keep them out of trouble. But one of the great things about trails is that they serve people of all ages and interests. MORE has always been steadfastly committed to the idea of multi-use trails. We advocate for trails. We build trails. We maintain trails, not just for mountain bikers, but for hikers, equestrians, anybody who wants to be on the trail. We strongly believe that we all belong and that we can all get along together and all benefit from that fantastic set of amenities that we have. And PROS calls out the idea that the Parks Department used to be your grandfather's suburban park system. We need to get better. The, I think this is my eighth or ninth CIP megathon in various capacities. I think Mitra Peddoway may be the only person in the room who has more under her belt than I do. But I can tell you that the Parks Department has made a lot of progress at moving into expanding its mandate, doing more things than what we ever expected it to do before. Some of that's about environmental stewardship, which is great. Some of it is about delivering the more conventional kinds of park amenities like a place for, you know, little kids to run around and play soccer. But it also needs to be attractive and pull people off the couch, not just to provide amenities that are there for people that choose to take advantage of them, but also compelling reasons for people to get out there and get some healthy physical activity and maybe even go out with a friend or make a new one. So, for all those reasons, we hope that you will support increasing natural surface trail budget, build on what's already been done at the Wheaton Adventure Park, and we're ready to help you. ready to help you, not just by going out there and helping you directly build and maintain the trails, but we want to go to the County Council again this year. I think last time, about half of the people who testified at the County Council on any subject on the CIP generally, not just parks, were trails advocates, and we're proud to do that, and we plan on doing that again to support the whole parks budget, not just trails, because we believe in what you're doing, and we view ourselves as a real partner to the Parks Department and this agency. I'll give you back 24 seconds of your time. Thank you.
I just want to comment in my own defense, my criticism Putnam is his measurement of social capital, not the idea itself. Just.
I'll look forward to getting into the fine points of.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And next is Chris Erwin.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Erwin, and I live in Silver Spring. I work for Prince George's County Public Schools, and my wife works for the National Institutes of Health. When we were looking to buy our house in Montgomery County was the obvious choice because of the diverse community and the wealth of natural resources, as well as a commitment to investing in the residents. I'm here tonight to encourage you to fully fund the Montgomery Parks Capital Improvement Plan budget, including the Wheaton Action Sports Park. It'll have a tremendous impact on our community, both near and far. In my professional career, I work closely with middle and high school students, and I know that they are craving spaces to recreate and hang out safely, without being kicked out for loitering, without being charged a fee, and without being accused. Giving opportunities to congregate and observe fun activities like skateboarding, climbing, parkour, bike-riding of all kinds will give them a desperately-needed third space, as well as access to lifetime athletic interests and to supporting and welcoming communities that exist in all of those areas. I'm also a parent of a three-year-old who is learning to ride his bike. Sometimes he rides his own balance bike on the trails, and sometimes he rides on my handlebars with me on a very safe bike with a helmet. But what he likes more than riding with me is seeing other kids ride bikes. Like, whenever we stop at a skate park, whenever he sees other kids playing, whenever he sees kids trying to send a bike jump, he really lights up, and he gets really excited about it. And I want him to have that opportunity like I had as a kid, and I know that there are so many other kids in Montgomery County who are just waiting for that moment and that experience. I think it's already been mentioned about how many residents live within two miles. I think it's, by the numbers, it's 100,000 residents live within two miles of Wheaton Regional Park. So, this is a huge opportunity, not just for the county to have a world-class regional park and a regional action sports network, but also to give something back to the residents who are right there, and really inspire people to be active in their life. I lost where I was in my notes. I have a minute left, so... Again, my ask is that you fully fund the capital improvements program. I'm both invested as an educator, as a resident, and as a parent, and I'm really excited by the opportunities that the Wheaton Master Plan has for everybody. So, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Erwin. And last in this group is Alfamara.
Good evening, sorry, Montgomery County Planning Board. I heard all of the excitement and support surrounding the Wheaton Action Park, so I'm going to add to that. My name is Alfamara, I'm 15-years-old, and a volunteer for Brookside Gardens, which is how I found out this forum. I was really excited about the Wheaton Regional Park that was getting upgrades with the Wheaton Master Plan. With my background in horticulture at Montgomery College and Architecture at the University of Maryland, and with an avid interest in parkour, I wanted to provide my feedback for the parkour park as it's being built. And, being built, okay. If you are interested in youth participation, I would like to link up with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We always enjoy the youth coming out and advocating for the parks, so thank you so much. So, the next group will be Patricia Philburn, Mary Finelli, Douglas Reamer, Stephen Newton, and Raymond Hinesman. Please, and friends. So, let's start with Patricia Philburn.
It's very technical. Okay, I'm Patty Philburn, a Montgomery County resident, and just something about me, when my son was born, I looked at my husband, and I said, "This kid will never play football." He would be here tonight, but he's at rugby practice. Okay, show of hands, how many of you have ever seen a rugby game?
Yeah, football wears helmets, rugby doesn't, so I don't know how you allowed him to do rugby instead of football.
Let me explain. I know about your football background. I've read about all of you. So, there's a couple of key differences between football and rugby. And, just, oh, by the way, this is Sarah Bolick. Okay, so, here's why rugby's safer, because they don't have helmets, they don't have pads, they don't have that false sense of security. They can't tackle in the head. They can tackle from here down. And if you try to tackle higher, you get kicked out of the game. My son figured that out in his first year. And it's just, it's more than a sport, it's the camaraderie of it. So, when my son, he tried baseball, softball, lacrosse, all the things, and he hated sports. He went to one rugby practice, he found his sport and his people. And so, that's why I'm here to try and ask you to give us a rugby pitch, because we don't have one.
Yes, hi, I'm Sarah Bolick. I'm the Vice President of Roosters Rugby, and we've been established in Montgomery County since 2016. We've grown from five players to over 100. We are having boys and girls ages eight and up through all sorts of different socio-demographic backgrounds in Montgomery County. We've struggled for the 10 years that we've been in existence trying to get field space, competing with soccer leagues, and football leagues, and lacrosse leagues, anybody that needs a rectangular field. And it's very difficult to get historical status within Montgomery County parks to be able to get your permits.
So, when my son found his sport, I decided that I had to join the board and be insane and get park space, and, oh my, no, that's a really hard process. I was, so, I was like, "Okay, so now we'll just get a rugby field." And so, I was calling the county, I'm like, "How do I do this?" And they're like, "You can meet in the fall." And I'm like, on my calendar, all excited, so I'm really happy to be here. If you, I sent a packet around in my very technical maps, if you want to look. There's a map of where the Northern Virginia has dedicated rugby fields, and these are literally just for rugby. And then next to it, it's a map of Maryland. There's a big spot missing, and it's in Montgomery County. And, so, I really think we can make the case. This is a hugely, oh, and that probably also explains why we always get our butts absolutely kicked when we play Virginia. That, and we don't know what they're feeding those children. So, one of the things about rugby that I love is that it's this just camaraderie. I once asked one of the coaches, and I said, "What is this? There's no competitiveness." Everybody, and he said, "If you go anywhere in the world and you join a rugby club, you'll have a job and a place to live in the first week." So, after every game, we have a family meal with the opponents, and this is one of the things you mentioned about football. A friend of mine's son was very excited to play football, so he went out, and he went to the orientation at the public school. And the coach said, "If you're not willing to hurt people, you don't need to be here." My friend's son went home crying. He dreamed his whole life of playing football, and he said, "I don't want to hurt kids." I can tell you without question, no rugby coach would ever say that. They're taught to hit as hard as they need to, not as hard as they can, and because this is a gentleman's game. And such, it's growing. We are the third-largest, if you look at the number of registered rugby players in the world. There are 800,000 registered rugby players in the United States, and we're growing so much.
Yeah, we will be hosting the World Cup in 2031 and 2033 for the women and the men's. We are...
And Baltimore and Washington are still in the running, they're on the shortlist.
Yes. We have a local Major League rugby team in the area that we work with to get more kids involved in rugby. We go out to Montgomery County Public Schools, we take over their PE classes, we bring all these new kids into the sport, which is why we are growing as a club so fast. But we're not the only club in Montgomery County. There are men's leagues, women's leagues, there are youth leagues starting, like with Touch, all the way up, old boys leagues, old girls leagues. So, there's a lot of rugby in Montgomery County that doesn't have a place to go. So, what we would like to ask for is a dedicated rugby pitch, but we'd also like you guys to consider opening up the program that you used to have where we could adopt a field. We currently practice at Stratton Park in Bethesda, it's right at the intersection by Montgomery Mall, because we have kids coming from DC, PG, Montgomery, all over Montgomery County. So, we would like to be able to try to find a field there that we could adopt and create into a rugby field.
Yeah, we'll raise the money.
We'll raise, we just need to go. We don't even want you guys to fund it. We would just like you to open that program again to allow organizations like ours, who are established nonprofits in the county, to be able to do something like that.
I feel like I'm at the Oscars, and the timer is counting down. So, real quick, the other thing I need you to know about rugby, the women that play this sport, they are amazing. They are fierce. You should see some of our young girls. They'll be like this big, and there's a guy this big and this, and they just take them down. And so, all of my mom friends who have daughters, I'm like, "Oh, rugby." Worried about safety? Rugby. They're just amazing. The other thing, real quick story, we were at the USA Rugby Game, and there was this little display, and my son went and was knocking things over, and this guy comes up, he's in his mid-30s, and he says, "Sir, do you play, kid, do you play rugby?" He goes, "Yes, sir." He goes, "Junior?" He's like, "Freshman." And he goes, "Okay." And he said, "Okay, so, when you want to go to college," and he goes, "Harvard, Princeton, Yale." He said, "All of us were public school kids, and none of us had the grades to get into these schools." But they do give preferential admissions to rugby players, because it's such a growing sport. And if you want to look in your packet, there's a list of all of the universities that give scholarships for rugby, and there's a whole lot of women's universities, and it's a lot easier to get a rugby scholarship than it is to get a football scholarship. And we'll take your old players.
I'm just wondering, can you use regular, like, soccer field or football field to play rugby?
Yes, we can. The thing is, it's very, very difficult in Montgomery County to get permits, and we fight with, we don't fight. We finally became, what is it, historical use on a field, but it's like, it's a miniature-sized soccer field for little kids. So, we actually have developed a partnership with a church in Bethesda, Bethesda United Church of Christ, where we are also using their indoor space and their field space to add to Stratton.
If you give us a soccer field, football field, anything square, we'll make it work.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was great to hear about rugby.
And the Women's Rugby World Cup is on this weekend, if you want to watch it.
Yeah, so, Mary Finelli, please.
Yes, my name is Mary Finelli. I'm here with my husband, Howard Edelstein, and we live in Montgomery County. We're here to request a dog park for Martin Luther King Jr. Park. We have owned our home in, right near the park since 2000, and Howard's been a Montgomery County resident most all of his life. Our neighborhood and many of the streets around it don't have any sidewalks, so a lot of people who have dogs are hesitant to walk their dogs in the street, which is what they'd have to do, and some people don't even bother walking their dogs because of it, which is really very unfortunate. To go to a dog park, closest dog park near us is about five miles away, so obviously we have to drive there, which is something we'd rather not have to do. Martin Luther King Jr. Park is a wonderful park, a very popular park. There's a number of fields there that are very little-used. We have some locations in mind that Howard can speak to that are near parking, and they have near plumbing, so it would be relatively inexpensive to have a dog park there. It's a great way to help socialize dogs, which is important for sociability, to get along with other dogs and humans. It's also a great way for humans to socialize. And again, it would be relatively inexpensive thing for the county to put in.
Yeah, I'll just add a little to that. Yeah, we love Martin Luther King Jr. Park, and as so many people have said, we love Wheaton Regional Park, where just this morning, I took my dog, and it's got a great dog park and great community of people that bring their dogs. And there are places in Martin Luther King Jr. Park that aren't used that often that would be ideal for dog parks, like behind the playground, there's a field there that it's only used once a year for like a little play in one afternoon. Besides that, it's vacant, and there is bathrooms close by, so it won't be hard to run plumbing for water for the dogs. And also, which just might be a little controversial, but within Martin Luther King Jr. Park, there's five fields, you know, ball fields, and three are for soccer, and they're used constantly. Two are for baseball, and they're rarely used, very rarely used. So, ideally, if one of those baseball fields could become a dog park, it already has a water fountain in there, so it'd be nothing to get, just a little spigot for the dogs to get water. It has a high fence, so it's already fenced in. Ideally, it could be split in half, so that I think it'd be a large dog area, a small dog area, but it's practically ready to go. And I don't think anybody would miss it, because like I said, the baseball fields aren't used often at all, and there's plenty of parking, and it's just such a lovely park. So, it'd be really great if we could have a dog park there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next participant is Douglas Reamer, who's speaking on behalf of Playball Academy and Doug Reamer Sports.
Hello, everyone. I don't have a friend or husband, but I'm here tonight.
I'll be your friend. I'm already married.
Any other takers? Now, look, so, respectfully, I kind of disagree with a lot of different things I'm hearing, only because I'm coming from a whole different angle. I've been a teacher in the county for over 20 years. I've taught at Einstein, Northwood, Springbrook, Northwest, and then I'm at a middle school. I'm not going to say which one right now, but it's right down the street. And I've also been coaching for over 20 years. I've got a chance to coach with the Orioles. I've coached 10 years of college baseball as a head coach, where I recruit players from all over the country, even built a pipeline with Taiwan, where we had players come down, they all turned pro. Beautiful community at its best right there, right? Starting from the top, kids get interested when there's that high-profile community of players and athletes in the neighborhood, and I think that, excuse me, I know that, you know, we need to make a change. The youth sports right now is crazy. It's not even, it doesn't even make sense. If anyone in here is involved with youth sports, that's why unfortunately, there's a lot of bad experiences, because everything is just crazy right now. But the good news is, I have been working on some plans for over 10 years, working with a lot of different people, organizations, really on my own, which has been pretty remarkable, the fact that I've been able to teach, raise three kids, and run a business for over 20 years. I actually just won in July, I won runner-up for best baseball camp in Maryland J&amp;D.C., which is kind of crazy, because I never even see people in my camp, like, who even votes on it? So, the fact that, you know, things have constantly seemed to be in the right direction of helping families and communities. I lost a $30,000 grant in May, which is really going to affect a lot of families, because I use it the right way. Field usage, as we know, has been difficult, but I've always found a way. I've even created different games for basketball, baseball, and football, so that people can go out there, have no experience, and still have a great time, and actually get better. And they actually want to keep playing, but then there's, just like we're saying, there's fields open, because some organizations are having a tough time to come out of their comfort zone and try new things. But I, you know, I guarantee that we can increase the number of players, and it doesn't matter which sport, it could be rugby, as long as it's not lacrosse, it could be rugby, it could be tennis, you know, just a lot of different sports that are out there, giving people a chance to learn the game. One thing I learned when I coached college for 10 years, and I've had hundreds of players go pro, I've got some guys in Major League, I train even some of the best Major Leaguers right now, and I'm just from Kensington, right? So, I'm from here, I'm a native, and I've been helping people get from A to Z, and without even playing travel ball. So, you know, the opportunity, especially in the Wheaton area and White Oak, talking about Martin Luther King, I even created a video like eight years ago, my daughter took of me, and I just haven't put it out yet because I wasn't ready, but now's the time. It's very frustrating. Too many of my students have passed away, too many students have been locked up, they were phenomenal athletes and people. Sometimes we forget that kids are actually awesome, we just sometimes have the wrong people in place. And I think that if we can build this certain hubs in these two places, and I've created it, it's ready to go, but Wheaton is a perfect spot, can't keep all my secrets right now, but it's right before our eyes, like, literally, it's right there. It shouldn't be that hard to do. Is that past my time? I thought the clock was going backwards. All right, well, anyway.
You're good.
Yeah. Okay, cool, thanks.
But when you're three minutes, I'm not sure what you're asking, or what you're advocating for.
Yeah, so what I'm advocating is for the Wheaton Regional area. I know that we're moving in the direction, right, of getting the different skate parks and all that in place, and that's great for things, but I think we can also have a lot of great, bring in some people from all over to participate in some high-level games and tournaments that aren't the norm right now. It goes actually more for rec players. Major League Baseball has those initiatives right now, too. So, I'm just asking for at least a follow-up, you know, so we can actually sit down and go through, because it is a really big project, it's hard to present. It's hard to present in three minutes, but I would like to at least find a way to reconnect and just go over because it's worth it because a lot of kids and families will benefit. And it's easier than we think and it's more needed than I really do think we all can see on a daily basis. I see it all the time, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your testimony. And next we will go to Stephen Newton.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Stephen Newton. I'm a 30-year homeowner here in Montgomery County. And I want to speak in support of Park's capital improvement plan, like everybody before me. And everybody before me has touched on really kind of the important highlights of the plan itself. I want to come at it from a slightly different angle, in particular talking about the natural surface trails program within Parks. The headlines are about a housing crisis, about the need for economic development and about traffic. And I think that continuing to invest strategically in natural surface trails is a way to give people a way to enjoy our county and its beautiful natural resources that we have without needing to get in their car. And I think that that is, that should be like one of the top line messages that we're giving about this program in particular. You know, we look out the window here in Wheaton and traffic is just continuing to get worse and worse. Single occupancy vehicle mindset seems to have really kind of exploded lately. And a way to be able to walk out your front door and do something in nature where you didn't have to drive anywhere gets everybody's heart rate down. And so I advocate for continuing the investment in natural surface trails and in improving the network between the trails. There are people who are actually using the trails for active transportation. And I encourage looking into that and expanding on that. Down County, East County, connections and ways to get through neighborhoods and connect neighborhoods, like was mentioned before. Northwest Branch to Paint Branch to Fairland and then start working your way northeast from there and Rock Creek Park. All of these beautiful gems of outdoor space, ways to get people to be able to use them. I'd like to be able to go to all of those parks and not get in my car at all. I'd like to ride my bike between all of those parks. So I'm here to advocate for that and to encourage Parks to expand their vision on how they bring the parks to the people. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And last in this group is Raymond Hinesman and daughter.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ray and I'm so happy to have the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. I live on Brisbane Street in Forest Glen. And in the last budget cycle, the planning board's recommendation to double annual capital funding for natural surface trails to $1 million was a bold and welcome statement of support. While the county council ultimately approved an increase to $800,000, that progress wouldn't have happened without your leadership and I wanted to thank you for that first. Natural surface trails are not a niche amenity. They are a countywide asset. Resident surveys consistently show that trails are the most valued features of our park system. That support is broad based and diverse, cutting across race, age, income and geography. This is about public health, access to nature and cultivating communities. With adequate funding, parks can build trails and especially I'd like to advocate for the east side of the county where we have less of that. One of the trails that I work on for the past few years is the Northwest Branch. We've done a lot of rerouting and a lot of that was volunteer work in conjunction with Parks. And pretty soon we're going to have a new project starting up along the 200 where the wet areas will have some boardwalks put in. And there was a bunch of us that worked on that to help secure a grant from the Maryland State Highway Authority to make that happen. This is all great stuff. Let's keep it going. We also wanted to advocate for the new action sport park at Wheaton Regional Park. It's part of the master plan that was already approved. And on the skate park, I'm going to ask my daughter to talk about her ask on that.
Hi, my name is Lake. I live on Brisbane Street. I have been skating for two years. My two favorite skate parks are Laurel and Arlington. They're one hour away. I'm really happy you're making a skate park that is like not an hour away from me. And now me and my friends can skate together.
Thank you, Lake. We understand the challenges of working within a tight capital budget, but natural surface trails offer one of the highest returns per dollar spent in the entire park system. They promote health, inclusion and sustainability and while being deeply rooted in the community stewardship. We respectfully urge the planning board to stay the course and reaffirm your prior recommendation to fund natural surface trails at $1 million per year, as well as the updates to Wheaton Regional Park. And if you could, please build the Carol Knoll's Pump Track that was approved a few years ago. That would be really great too. Thank you again for your vision and support.
To thank you again, Mr. Hinesman and daughter Lee. We really appreciate your testimony. So thank you all and we'll bring up the next group is William Sickles, Howard Edelstein, Erica Chu. I'm sorry. Okay. Joe Kraut, Nicole Moore. And if there's anyone here that came to provide testimony and haven't, come on up, please. Okay, why don't we get started? William Sickles.
Do I have to push it once? Cool.
Yeah, push it.
Hi there, I'm Will Sickles, representing Kids After Hours Skateboard Camp, kind of Kids After Hours in general. And I'm going to be speaking pretty specifically towards the Action Sports Park at Wheaton Regional. A little bit about myself, I have been the director for Kids After Hours Skateboard Camp for a number of years now. Kids After Hours has been doing skateboarding in Montgomery County for 22 years. And I started when I was about seven years old as a camper at Kids After Hours. I was also the director of Woodward Camp, which is the largest action sports facility and program in the world. And I was also a social studies teacher at Farquhar Middle School and at Rosa Parks Middle School. I'd like to just identify a lot of the needs that we have kind of in Montgomery County for a skate park and for an action sports complex. There are kind of three specific kind of needs or three specific kind of, you know, parts of our community that really need the skate park. So I'm going to be identifying kind of the needs for families, the needs for the skateboarders and then the needs for, you know, the area of Wheaton and kind of the surrounding community. So as far as needs for families goes, so with the Kids After Hours Skate Camp, I am bringing anywhere from 15 to 25 kids around to skate parks. We can't go anywhere in Montgomery County. Not a single skate park here has a bathroom. There's the Olney Skate Park, but we have to use like the indoor swimming pools bathrooms, which they do not love us using. But I'm taking my guys to Sykesville. I'm taking them to Annandale. I'm taking them to Glen Burnie. And this is just to access, and I don't even care about the actual ramps there. I just need a place where I can bring kids, that there's shade, there's bathrooms. I'm not having to throw them in the van, drive to a Wawa 10 minutes down the road just to be able, especially for girls. About half of my program is girls or we're getting there. And it makes it very difficult when you're kind of out there at these public skate parks and there's just nothing there. So as far as like these skate parks having like proper facilities, shade, bathrooms, places that kids and families need if they're going to be using these spaces at all. So if I was like a family of five and I was to be using a skate park, I would say the oldest kid would be there to ride, skate, whatever it is. The younger two are just kind of there. There's not a place for them to sit. What often will happen is they will bring their little scooters, little plastic skateboards, and they're just running around the skate park. The issue with that is skate parks are terribly dangerous if you're not familiar with how to use them or if they're not built safely or if there's not like proper instructions on how to use them. And so like unfortunately, I have run into and hurt young kids. And I am the most conscious skateboarder you could possibly come across. I am extremely safe. I'm bringing kids everywhere. And there's just no getting around the fact that if there are families with no place to go, they will spill over into the actual skate park, which is designed for people to be using, people who already have experience using those skate parks. So what I'm advocating for is in the original plan that was discussed a couple of months ago, there was some kind of smaller design committee, but they identified a kids wield area. This is something that I have never seen kind of surrounding a skate park, but I can't think of anything that would be better for the safety. Every community pool has a baby pool. There is a reason for that. It's for safety. If I'm bringing my 10-year-old, three-year-old and one-year-old, my 10-year-old can swim around with his friends, but I am very focused in on is my three and one-year-old going to be safe? So skate parks are the same way. Skate parks are not necessarily the best place to learn how to ride. It's like learning to swim in the ocean. There needs to be a place for parents to feel comfortable with their younger kids running around, whether they're skateboarding on their bikes, on roller skates, whatever it is, that is nearby, but not crossing over with the skate park space that's going to be used by varying skill levels, but people that have experience. So basically, if I was a parent, I would be very uncomfortable. I would not allow my younger kids anywhere near the skate park. And right now in Montgomery County, there is no option for that. There's not even a skate park with a playground next to it. There is the Tacoma Park one, but it's falling apart and the bathroom's a porta potty that you gotta like duck around the corner to find. So that's kind of the needs for families as far as needs for skateboarders go. Right now, if I am a student at Kennedy, Wheaton, Northwood, where do I go to skate? Right now, they're relegated to parking lots, trespassing or just quitting. They don't necessarily like have cars, nor should they. If I'm a 14-year-old skateboarder at Kennedy High School, I need to have a safe place to go. And if they don't have a safe place to go, I think we all kind of know some of the other decisions that young people can make. And kind of furthermore, with as far as what skateboarders would need, if there is like a really properly funded, large skate park that kind of caters to different skill levels, people will travel here. I bring my camp to Annandale. We go anywhere we can just to get a place that's like properly funded and has bathrooms, shade. So I'm willing to drive an hour, right? But I would much rather, I'm based out of Glen Haven Elementary School. I would love to just zip my kids right on up to Wheaton Regional, a place where Kids After Hours has been bringing kids to Wheaton Regional for 35 years, thousands of kids over the course of the summer. And then it's just as far as, because it lasts a few seconds, just as far as the needs for this specific area, like I was mentioning, people will travel here, skateboarders. If there is a good place to go, they will seek it out. And I'm identifying just skateboarders, but I kind of mean, you know, bicycle riders, scooter riders in general. And I think it's been mentioned a couple of times here already, but Wheaton Regional is already kind of a staple. People already love it. It's already convenient. But for the action sports complex specifically, it is satisfying a need, not just in this area, but in Montgomery County and honestly, in just in Maryland in general. So thank you for your time and I'd just, I'd love to have a nice, safe place to bring my kids to skate.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sickles, for your testimony. Next is Erica Chu.
Hi. Hi, my name is Erica Chu. I live in the Springbrook section of Silver Spring. And I'm here to advocate for a dog park at Martin Luther King Park. If I could elaborate on my esteemed fellow resident of Springbrook, Howard Edelstein, there's already a substantial need and demand for a dog park in Spring, in the, at Martin Luther King Park for the surrounding areas. There's no sidewalks on any of the surrounding neighborhoods. So if you wish to walk your dog, you have to walk them in the street, which is a safety hazard, not just for the dogs, but for their humans and for the motorists as well. A prime location already exists at Martin Luther King Park. There's actually three baseball fields. There is, two of them have been in heavy use this past summer. But there's a third field that's for baseball that has actually sat idle for, we're in September now, for the last nine months because I've watched it. I just got a dog this year and we walk Martin Luther King Junior Park three times a day, seven days a week. And this third baseball field, nothing, nothing's ever there. Nothing happens. It's literally not in use. It's already fenced. It's next to a male and female bathroom. So plumbing already exists. There's already grass. So for very little cash outlay, Montgomery County could have a beautiful dog park. All it really needs is a gnawing for shade and some trees and some benches for the humans to watch their dogs play and to bark. And that's literally all it would take to open up a dog park for very little cost and for very little time and effort. It's important for dogs to socialize. And currently, dogs in the Springbrook area and the White Oak area don't have an opportunity to do that where they live. It's actually a hardship driving to Olney or to downtown Silver Spring, which are the closest dog parks in this economy in terms of gas, in terms of wear and tear on your car. It's a substantial hardship. There's also elderly people in the neighborhood who utilize Martin Luther King Junior Park, who are walking their dogs and who are having to walk the trails at all kinds, in all kinds of weather, at all times of day. If there was a dog park, it would be easier for them as well. The need is great and I hope that you will consider my remarks in your budget and will give us the dog park that we desperately need.
Thank you, Ms. Chu, for providing testimony. Next is Joe Kraut.
Hello, my name is Joe Kraut and I'm here to support funding in the CIP budget beginning 2027 for the design phase for a new conservatory at Brookside Gardens. The design phase of this project should start now and not six years from now. Everyone knows how immensely popular and successful Brookside Gardens has been over the years and remains today. Brookside has over 800,000 visitors a year. They have an amazing number of volunteers. They have a very effective fundraising group, the Friends of Brookside Gardens. Their programs are heavily attended. And I'd point out that thousands of Montgomery County second graders and private school second graders have gone to Brookside's butterfly display as part of their nature studies and environmental studies. A new conservatory, the conservatory now is 56 years old. It needs increasing levels of maintenance and repairs, which would all be reduced, obviously with a new facility. New greenhouse technology would be implemented, which would significantly lower the energy footprint of a new conservatory, be it with energy curtains, better heating equipment, more accurate, efficient controls and even maybe sources of power. The Phipps Conservatory outside of Pittsburgh, for example, for over 10 years has been powered by a single energy cell, which sits in a cabinet about the size of a refrigerator. Why not Brookside? Why not us? A new conservatory would also be designed for programs of today and the future, not programs from 56 years ago. And adaptability could be built into the design. I want to point out also that the Smithsonian earlier this year closed down their butterfly display. So now Brookside's butterfly display is the only live butterfly display in the Washington area. That makes it an important resource. And what's that sound? Ka-chink, ka-chink, ka-chink. The sound of money. Okay, never mind. But in short, the adaptability would be there in the design of a new conservatory. It needs, we need to have the money ready to go for planning. That will produce a price tag for the whole, for the whole project. It'll produce models and artist renderings. It will create a buzz. And again, Brookside's base of support is very strong. And there are lots of people who, they think they own Brookside Gardens. And the feeling of ownership of Brookside Gardens within the county is very strong and you would get the funding. I'll point out very quickly, finally, the visitor center at Brookside was built based on the original huge contribution of one donor. The production greenhouse, which finished in 2018, was built on the generous contribution of one donor. It can happen again. It can happen again with a new conservatory, but you have to get the money on the CIP for the design phase. Thank you very much for your time listening to me.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Kraut. And next is Nicole Moore.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nicole Moore. I've been a Montgomery County resident for over 12 years now. I live in Bethesda and I'm a mother to a seven-year-old and a five-year-old. I am the PA president at my son's school. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Parents Council of Washington. And I am here to propose a small ask. I would like to see a pollinator garden at every single Montgomery County park. Being around my kids and trying to get them away from screens, I have successfully done that by building a beautiful garden in our yard. And my son discovered his love for butterflies. And learning about butterflies, you need host plants, you need nectar plants. And it would be great to see this at our parks. Right now, we can go to Brookside Gardens to go see those butterflies and they have a beautiful garden there. But I think to support our butterfly species such as the monarch and the Baltimore checker spot, which is the Maryland state butterfly, who is going extinct right now, I can personally say I've never seen one. But if we can build a space, it can even be by the entrance ways, along the sidewalks, somewhere where we could have a designated spot for these host plants, such as milkweed for the monarchs. And then the white turtle head, which is the host plant for the Baltimore checker spot. By doing this, it would help, you could create hubs. And the neighborhoods would be the corridor for these pollinators to visit. It's a safe place for them, especially with all the spraying of insecticides and pesticides that are happening in our neighborhoods. It could be educational for our kids. And it's just beautiful to look at. I think you could do it in different phases, maybe have a couple, two or three flagship parks that you could trial it and then eventually roll it out to every single park going forward. These would be with host plants, so you wouldn't need to worry about watering them. They pretty much take care of themselves. You can also ask that local garden clubs get involved or volunteers to help support and maintain these areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for your testimony. We have one more tonight and it's virtual. Is it, it's, oh yeah, I'm sorry, sir. Why don't you state your name?
Hi, I'm Dave McGill. I'm here speaking as an individual, but many of you may know that I'm the Maryland Advocacy Director for the Mountain Bike Club, Moore. We do about 10,000 hours of volunteer work across many different jurisdictions. Well over 1,000 hours, probably 2,000 hours a year are here in Montgomery County. And I'm here to speak in support of the natural surface trails component of the CIP. Thank you so much for increasing that last year to 800,000 and I want to support that in further increase to a million dollars, a million dollars a year. Now, how is it possible that Montgomery County already has 200 miles of very fine natural surface trails and yet we're here asking for more? So there's three themes: connections, local, and fun features. Those are the three main themes. They do overlap. Connections are, allow the growing number of long-distance riders, runners, trail users to go farther and to create opportunities for them to really get a good physical workout in a beautiful setting. Local is, we've heard before how important it is for people to be able to get to something close. Not everybody will walk to there, but if they only have to drive a few minutes, that's great. And here's an example of connection and local coming together. Our club recently recommended to your Parks Development Department to build a quarter-mile connector up in Damascus to a road. And no sooner is it to a local park that was only built a few years ago, Oak Ridge Park. And I was out there and I was amazed to see how many people, not only were in Oak Ridge Park on a Saturday morning, which has only been there for two years, but the people were using the one-month-old connector trail. People are finding out about these things and using them as fast as you can possibly build them. It really is attractive. And by the way, this was a couple, I would guess they were in their 70s or near 80 and they were parking locally and walking on this trail. There are many more opportunities like that all around the county to do connections and local. And then finally, fun features. That's what brings out the kids, that's what brings out the kids and the adults and gets them to keep coming back. Your park team is very good at building bike parks, at building side features, things that will entertain the users. So I truly believe that Montgomery County has another five to 10 years of trail development ahead of it to become one of the premier places of natural surface trails in the entire country. And I will tell you, I travel all over and look at trail systems everywhere and we have a really fine one and I want to thank you for that.
So thank you so much for your comments. We really appreciate them. And our last person tonight is Elizabeth Demery. Who's on teams?
Thank you so much. Good job with the name. I just want to confirm you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, please.
Okay, excellent. Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Elizabeth Demery. I am a fifth-generation Montgomery County resident and dog owner. You may hear her in the background, I apologize. My family has lived, worked, and walked these streets for decades and my great-great-grandfather was the first mayor of Geithersburg. I care deeply about the balance of growth and livability and sustainability in our county and am proud to be from here. I am here to speak in support of funding and citing a dog park within a half mile of the Bethesda Metro Station. Montgomery County's own climate action plan emphasizes walkability, active public spaces, equity, and reducing car trips. While the plan doesn't specifically mention dog parks, it champions exactly the kinds of amenities that encourage people to leave their cars at home and use local parks daily. A walkable dog park does just that, making everyday car trips, everyday trips car-free and climate-aligned. Your own project pages for Bethesda Market Park already list a small and large dog park among the proposed amenities. It's not a new idea. It is part of the county's vision for downtown Bethesda's open space network along the Elm Street Urban Park and the Capitol Crescent Trail. Previous capital budget documents even priced Bethesda Dog Park near the Norwood Park at roughly half a million dollars, but the funding was deferred while alternatives were studied. In other words, the groundwork has been laid and what we now need is follow-through and the right location downtown near transit. Research consistently shows that dog parks succeed when they are within walking distance where people live. And Bethesda is exactly the kind of dense, walkable area where this principle matters. Thousands of residents live in apartments and condos around Metro. Many don't have yards and many rely on service assistance animals. Federal law under ADA and HUD requires safe, accessible accommodation for these animals. A central walkable dog park is an equity issue as well as a quality-of-life amenity. It's estimated that Bethesda has about 27,300 households. In Maryland, roughly 30% of those households own a dog. That translates to about 8,000 or more dog-owning households in Bethesda alone. Countywide pet licensing data confirms the scale at more than 15,000 licenses issued last year. Combine that with the county's own projections of residential growth under the downtown plan, the demand is real and growing. Concerns about cleanliness and maintenance are real, but they are solvable. A UC Davis study found that the clear signage and volunteer engagement were the strongest predictors of clean, well-maintained dog parks. Design matters, double-gated entries, separate areas for small and large dogs, shade and water access. These are best practices. Montgomery Parks already applies elsewhere. As a lifelong Montgomery County resident, I believe that investing in a dog park near the Bethesda Metro is more than a pet project, it's a community necessity, aligns with your climate and equity goals, it builds plans you already have in motion, and it meets with the needs of thousands of residents, including those in apartments and those with service animals. Dogs need space, neighbors need community. I urge you to approve the funding and finalize a site for a dog park within half a mile of Bethesda Metro. Thank you very much for your vision and the plans your work already promises.
Thank you so much, Ms. Demery. I believe that's all we have on teams tonight. I just want to end by saying I want to thank all of you for your thoughtful remarks and we really appreciate the engagement from everyone in the county. We want to hear what you have to say about how we can improve, grow our park system. So thank you for coming out tonight and we will be hosting work sessions on this plan in the coming months and the dates will be posted on our website with the agenda link. So thank you for coming out tonight. Have a safe trip home and we hope to hear from you again soon. Thank you. And this ends our planning board evening meeting for today. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.[1776.32][1776.32]